We are live.
Chris, just let me know when we're live.
We're live. We're ready to go. If you'd like to go ahead and start us off, John.
Would. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to bring to order this April 6, 2020, meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. Thanks, everyone, for being here tonight. We're doing our best facing some technological challenges. It's the second time we've held a remote meeting via WebEx. So appreciate your patience as we work through some kinks in the system this evening. Regardless, I would like to call on Michelle Hauck, our city clerk, for a roll call, please. Michelle.
Good evening. So if you can just say here when I call your name, we'll start with Mayor Molfeld.
Here.
Councillor Sweeney. Just say here. Councillor Quinell. Councillor Quinell.
Councillor Quinell is not here.
Councillor Hartman. Here. Councillor Henan.
Here.
Councillor Fury.
Here.
And Councillor Norton. He is a she is here just as an attendee right now. The city staff, city manager Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Jacobs.
Here.
Planning and building director Taylor.
Here.
Public Works Director Workman.
Here.
Planning or planner to Minnick.
Here.
And moderator IT administrator Chris Hunt, and then city clerk, myself, Hauck.
Yes.
Here.
Thanks very much, Michelle. Before we move on to our presentation, which will be our annual review of consideration for approval approval of the Whitefish Convention and Visitor Bureau Marketing Plan and Budget, I'm going to go ahead and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I apologize, but the American flag's right in front of me, but it's not visible to the camera, unfortunately. And I'll start the pledge now. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. Republic, which it stands.
And nation under God.
Invisible with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. And I just noticed that Rebecca has now joined us. Good to see you, Rebecca. Apparently, she can't hear us just yet, but we'll work through that kink in the system. And we'll move on to item three of our agenda, which is a presentation. As I mentioned, we have Dylan Boyle with the Whitefish Convention and Visitor Bureau here to give us and present the marketing plan and budget for fiscal year 21. Dylan, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Molfeld. Hey, Chris, I still don't have access to the share content button yet.
Coming to you right now.
Excellent. Thank you.
And you should have access now.
Great. Pardon me just a minute as I switch over to my presentation. And I just want to test this to make sure that everyone can see a presentation on your screen on the top. It should say the Whitefish brand areas of activity FY21 budget. Does everyone see that?
Yes. Yes, we've got you.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. Mayor Molfeld, city council and city staff. Thank you for your time. My name is Dylan Boyle. I'm here tonight to present some information on the activities of the Whitefish Convention Visitors Bureau, which is also known as Explorer Whitefish, and to request that the city council approve the FY21 marketing plan and the public portion of the budget. And for your references, information can be found on pages 19 to 60 of your packet. And state law does require this approval in order for the WCBB to receive our annual funds from the lodging facility use tax, which is also known as the bed tax. I do have a slideshow presentation that I'll be utilizing as a visual aid to talk about the various activities that we currently engage in. We provide vital community and economic development services to Whitefish, and these services will be even more important as we look forward to the future. As our community and organization are currently experiencing unprecedented impacts as a result of COVID-19, I will also speak to the current economic situation and how we are now projecting our budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And this information was summarized in the briefing paper, which I attached as part of the cover letter to the marketing plan, and that briefing paper is on page 20 and 21 of your packet for reference. Again, I would like to introduce the members of my board of directors. I am very fortunate to have such an engaged and passionate group to serve at the pleasure of. Zach Anderson is our chair from Abruzzo Italian Kitchen, representing restaurant and bar. Erica Terrell, vice chair from Glacier Restaurant Group, also representing restaurant and bar. Rhonda Fitzgerald is our secretary and treasurer from the Garden Wall Inn, representing small lodging. Nick Columbus, representing Whitefish Mountain Resort. Mariah Joss of Nelson's Hardware is our retail rep. We also have Edna White from Avril Hospitality, large lodging. From Alpine Theater Project is our at-large arts and culture representative. Jesse Farns from Montana Coffee Traders, as well as Jenny Claudier from the Big Mountain Commercial Association, who is our transportation representative. And we are also very fortunate to work with two excellent agencies, LJ Communications, which is based in Whitefish and comprised of Lisa Jones and Brian Schott. They are our contracted public relations agency. And we also have DVA Advertising, which is based in Bend, Oregon, and they are our contracted creative services agency. We also have three staff members, including marketing and sales manager Dan Hanson and office manager Sarah Stewart. I'm so fortunate to have an extremely talented and experienced group, staff and contracted agencies. The purpose of the Whitefish Convention and Visitors Bureau Marketing Plan is to sustainably grow the economy of Whitefish by emphasizing its desirability as a premier year-round travel destination to non-resident visitors who appreciate and respect our character of place. We do recognize the strain that increased summer visitation has historically placed upon our town. And as such, we support business strategies that emphasize economic and social benefits to our community while maintaining the integrity of place and quality of life of our local residents. And this certainly includes the WCBB's partnerships with the city of Whitefish, which include the Crisis Communication Partnership, as well as our core commitment to the Whitefish Sustainable Tourism Management Plan, which ideally will be in front of you at some point for approval in the near future. The WCBB aligns perfectly with the Montana brand. And I'll resee the brand pillars hopefully in front of you. More spectacular unspoiled nature than anywhere else in the lower 48. Vibrant and charming small towns that serve as gateways to our natural wonders. Breath-taking experiences by day. Relaxing hospitality at night. And we utilize the Montana brand pillars in unison to promote exactly what Whitefish is. A vibrant and charming small town that provides breathtaking experiences by day, relaxing hospitality at night, and serves as a gateway to our spectacular, unspoiled nature. The WCBB enters into paid advertising. That's online, print and out of home in our core geographic target markets outside of the state of Montana, which are identified as having the largest potential for growth. These are here on your screen, and they include Seattle, Portland, Chicago, Los Angeles, San Francisco, Minneapolis, and our regional drive-to, which includes Spokane, Washington. I also want to mention that this year we've identified Missoula as an established geographic market, as it has been historically strong for Whitefish in terms of visitation, and also due to ease of travel as it's pretty close in terms of proximity to Whitefish. And the ability to make short shoulder season trips and last-minute trips makes this a desirable market. And Explorer Whitefish will pursue the possibility of using some of our private funds for some specific targeted marketing opportunities in this market. However, I do want to make it very clear, as I've also noted on the screen, that we will be utilizing only private funds for that, as we are unable to use public funds from bed tax, which I'm asking for approval of this evening, for in-state advertising per rules and regulations. It's not allowed to spend those public funds in states. So I just made clear that those would be private funds. Alberta is also a geographic market that's established. We've obviously seen historically strong visitation to Whitefish from Alberta. And although this market is very important, we don't want to become over-reliant on this market due to fluctuations in international currency rates, and that certainly can severely affect visitation and spending as well from Alberta. So that's why we choose to invest in the geographic markets, which I've identified there on your screen. In addition, we spend 60% of our advertising budget promoting winter, 20% for fall, and 20% for spring. We continue to put our efforts into driving visitation to Whitefish during the shoulder seasons to ensure that we continue to have a year-round vibrant town and community, not increasing capacity during the already busy summer months. As such, our target audience are those whose travel or vacation time is not restricted by an academic calendar. And to illustrate one of the reasons for this strategy, here is a sampling of lodging occupancy within the city limits of Whitefish during all four quarters of 2019. So as you can see there, the summer quarter of July through September is significantly higher, and the other three quarters are quite low in terms of your average lodging occupancy. So I just wanted to make sure that you had those numbers there. We leverage our advertising dollars with cooperative marketing opportunities that are provided by the Montana Office of Tourism and Business Development. And we also actively participate in opportunities with our regional partners, including Whitefish Mountain Resort and Glacier Country Tourism. The objective for winter, which is on your screen now, is to grow occupancy and build business levels during the ski season of December to April. And our narrative leads with our world-class ski and snowboarding experiences, while we also speak to the accessibility of our charming town. And while we do lead with that, we also highlight other winter recreation experiences available in our area. We integrate this compelling imagery with the invitation for travelers to fully immerse themselves in the Whitefish experience through our wander campaign, which began last winter and is fully integrated across our advertising, website, and our travel guide as well. Here's another example of some winter creative from this year. We engage in a number of out-of-home displays with Whitefish Mountain Resort in public spaces. And this is an example here from the Seattle Airport from Sea-Tac, which ran this winter. And we also performed a similar placement in the Portland Airport, as well as in the Chicago train station with the call to action to take the direct flights from each of those markets. The objective of our spring, which is also known as the secret season, is to grow occupancy and business levels during May and June. As we continue to position Whitefish as the base camp for Glacier National Park, the narrative leads with spring experiences, including biking, the going to the Sun Road. Obviously, this year is very different. Our full campaign was scheduled to kick off in mid-March, and we have postponed the campaign until further notice. We did have two print pieces that had already been approved prior to COVID-19. Fortunately, they do comprise just a small portion of our budget, and they will be in the marketplace for any period of time through the fall. So, you know, still certainly good news there. But we have postponed our spring campaign until further notice. And lastly, the objective of our fall campaign, which is also called our summer plus season, is to grow occupancy and business levels during September through the end of October. And the narrative for this season includes experiences in Glacier National Park, as well as other public lands which surround Whitefish. And you can see a sample of our fall/summer plus creative here. The primary call to action in all our paid placement is to visit our website, which is explorewhitefish.com. On the homepage of the website, we have a header image which integrates with each of our seasonal campaigns. Under normal circumstances, the two orange buttons that you see there on the header image would direct website users to book your stay or to find flights. However, as of mid-March, these buttons now direct letters from the mayor with accompanying video, as well as a letter from Explorer Whitefish, also with an accompanying video from myself, with the consistent message of safety and empathy for our community and for our visitors, who over the years have contributed and will continue in the future to contribute immensely to the economy of Whitefish when the time is right to travel again. However, now is not the time. And I just wanted to show you a few screenshots here. This is what happens when you click on that letter from us. Here's the message from Explorer Whitefish with hopefully the video that you have all seen from March 27, myself, as well as on the of our homepage, we do have a rotator section, and that usually has inspiration for traveling to Whitefish, trip planning ideas for different seasons. But now it is solely dedicated to that consistent messaging from the city, from Explorer Whitefish, as well as updates on the current status of our restaurants and services and what is going on with COVID-19 in Montana. So we're constantly updating that information. So you can see we've definitely been flexible with with how we've approached the the website in order to address the current situation as well as we can. This timely, thoughtful, and well-executed standardized communication during times of crisis such as these is made possible by the WCBB and the City of Whitefish Crisis Communication Partnership. This work can also be seen through the series of community outreach videos, which the partnership has filmed and edited over the course of the last few weeks. These can be found through the city's YouTube channel and have been integrated into the city's homepage and COVID-19 resource update and notifications page, as well as through the Explorer Whitefish homepage, which I just showed you through our member center, through our member newsletter, as well as through media outlets and across various social media channels. The next video in the series is being shot today and tomorrow and is focusing on the local restaurants who are partnering with the Whitefish Community Foundation to provide meals to the food bank. We'll also continue that series app later on, and we'll continue to for the time being. We believe that this partnership is extremely valuable and serves our community well. A very special thank you is in order to the WCBB's Contracted Public Relations Agency, comprised of Lisa Jones and Brian Schott, as well as city manager Dana Smith and Mayor John Molfeld for all of your hard work. In addition to the Crisis Communication Partnership, our public relations program is incredibly robust. I do want to show you a few screenshots here, just to show you a bit of the work that they do. The public relations team works directly with travel writers, bloggers, photographers, videographers, and digital influencers on strategic story placement, as well as creating specific messaging and providing photography support for the organization. During the last fiscal year, the PR team planned and hosted 40-plus shoulder-season media visits in conjunction with local and regional media partners. Through their earned media efforts and strategic story placement, an estimated 206 million people were reached last year with a total advertising equivalent of $1.9 million. In the marketing plan, as well as in the appendix, which is under the year in review, you can find many examples of their media highlights. I've also added some recent publicity that we've had this winter as a direct result of the efforts of the PR team on your screen. Those include Ski Town, Whitefish, Montana, that was from Ski Magazine, The Best Time to Visit Glacier National Park, from Trip Savvy, 11 Places to Recoup After the Holidays, Outside Magazine, and 48 Hours in Whitefish, which was with Outdoor Research, also known as OR, and also accompanied their catalog as well, featuring Whitefish. The PR team has also been involved in athlete sponsorship for many years with our hometown Olympic hero and X Games medalist Maggie Voison, while also coordinating the extremely popular annual Ski with Maggie Day with Whitefish Mountain Resort. In early March, Maggie won the gold medal at X Games Norway in women's ski slope style, as well as a silver in women's big air. We're so proud of our hometown hero. Another area of activity we engage in is visitor information and fulfillment services. In addition to our advertising and public relations work, we do publish the official Whitefish Travel Guide, as well as the Green Whitefish Town Map. This year, we printed 27,500 of the travel guides and are on pace to print and distribute around 60,000 of those town maps. Both pieces are distributed through various channels, as were outlined in the marketing plan, including the five kiosks, which are located around downtown Whitefish. And that does include the new one that's on the corner of the northeast corner, rather, of Depot Park, as well as the two information kiosks that are located in the parking structure adjacent to City Hall. In cooperation with Public Works, we have also outfitted the five freestanding kiosks with free Wi-Fi, directing users to a customized landing page on explorewhitefish.com. Here's what that landing page looks like, as well as how you can utilize it through events, dine, things to do, et cetera. This is an amenity for both residents and visitors to Whitefish, and we're very proud of how this has turned out and been received. We all partner with the Whitefish Chamber of Commerce to provide financial assistance, collateral, and updated visitor information for the Walk-in Visitor Center, which is located on Second and Central. To summarize, we know what we are doing is working. Our targeted online ads consistently outperform the industry standard. Earned media exposure continues to grow, and most importantly, this translates into real business in Whitefish, as well as through positive and negative tourism trends, both domestically and internationally. We will continue to be creative and innovative with our tourism marketing and public relations efforts in order to bring high-yield, low-impact geo-travelers to Whitefish when the time is right to travel. For now, the question certainly remains, how much of an impact and for how long will we see these impacts from COVID-19? These projections are extremely difficult due to the fluid nature of the current situation without knowing how long it will be until it is not only safe to travel to Whitefish again, but when visitors will return to Whitefish when it is safe to travel. As such, we began a process of attempting to quantify some of the revenue loss that we're seeing locally, as we've received a lot of questions about that. We partnered with the Whitefish Chamber of Commerce to conduct a study to estimate the revenue loss per day that was seen during March as the impacts of COVID-19 were going on. Hopefully, you've seen this, but just to reiterate here, the estimated total revenue loss per day for those businesses is over $732,000 a day. Just want to make sure this information does get out there, so we can begin to at least establish a baseline for what's happening in our town and to our small businesses. And the chamber and I are looking at conducting this again in April, probably mid-April, to once again kind of build on that baseline to help to advocate for our small businesses. In addition to that, when we begin our budgeting process yearly for the upcoming fiscal year, we start doing that in early January with the initial approval from the WCBB Board of Directors in early March. And since that time, obviously, the impacts of COVID-19 have forced us to begin to reevaluate our budgets, not only for this fiscal year, but obviously for FY21 as well. And when we're projecting our annual budgets, we take into consideration historic trends from many sources. So that can include the resort tax collections, the Whitefish lodging collections, our own tourism promotion assessment collections, as well as we do receive preliminary revenue projections for our bed tax from the Montana Department of Commerce. And for the revised budget that you'll see here, we've also utilized some scenario projections that we've gotten from the Montana Department of Commerce, along with some other sources to create our baseline for the following revised budget. And that can be found on page 34 of the FY21 marketing plan, as well as a brief description is in your briefing paper as well. So as you can see, our initial, when we were looking at this, initially, we had projected our FY21 public budget to be $150,000, pretty similar to what we had projected for this current year. And our revised projections, we looked at it in terms of quarterly collections, as we inherently do have seasonal fluctuation in visitation and spending. And we do believe that this is an optimistic view for us. And what we're looking at currently is a initial projection of 75% decrease in bed tax collections for the April to June quarter. 50% down for the summer quarter. 25% down for October to December, and hopefully back up to around 2018 for the majority of ski season for January to March of 2021. So that's, that's kind of where we're at, certainly, is a fluid situation, as I mentioned, and will continue to monitor collections and trends and to adjust accordingly. And this is a pie chart for you, just to give you a breakdown of where we plan to utilize our public funds. The vast majority of the public funds we do put straight into advertising. I also want to I also want to make a note for you that we are certainly looking at a similar situation with our private budget accounts for about eighty percent of our total budget, and this comes from membership dues, as well as the one percent tourism promotion assessment. And as I mentioned, we're looking kind of at similar projections for our FY21 budget. We had initially projected about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, but obviously, that has significantly changed. Since we are still monitoring the situation and still creating projections for the FY21 private budget, I at least wanted to provide you with the overall percentage is for each of our budget line items that are allocated to our private budget in order to show the city council the full scope of services that the Whitefish Convention and Visitors Bureau does provide. And that is also in that budget on page thirty-four with a little bit more explanation for you. And with that, I am here once again to request that the city council approve the WCVB FY21 marketing plan and public lodging tax budget of seventy-eight thousand dollars. And I am happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thanks very much, Dylan. Appreciate the thorough presentation and the quality of the presentation. As usual, I'll turn it to the council. Are there any questions or comments from council members on the FY21 marketing plan or? Comments, questions? I'll go ahead. I do have a couple, Dylan. First of all, I just want to emphasize how much, as a city, we appreciate the strong partnership that we've formed with the CVB. It's become increasingly more important to us as we face times like we are today. And I want to give you a big shout-out and kudos for being strong partners with the city, as well as the efforts LJ Communications has made to help with our public outreach during this COVID-19 crisis. We value this partnership, and it's very much appreciated. With that said, regarding lodging occupancy, the numbers that you presented, I recall we touched on this last year. One question I have for you is when our non-peak seasons, when we're only seeing forty to forty-five percent lodging occupancy on average in our hotels and motels, obviously, we've seen an increase in supply over the years with the addition of the Hampton and the Hilton. So we essentially have a fairly saturated market from a supply standpoint. How much are those percentages driven by those that own second homes or elect to stay in VRBOs or short-term rentals? Because it seems that that lodging type isn't captured in your data.
Yes, that is correct. So that dataset, as with it certainly does have some limitations. So that is a sample of about four-hundred-and-fifty brick-and-mortar room nights that are within the city limits, and it's, the dataset's made up of basically most of the large lodging properties. So it is only a snapshot. In terms of increased inventory, I kind of look at that two ways. So as you mentioned, we have seen an increase in inventory from the brick-and-mortar standard hotels over the last few years. And what I have seen with that is there mostly has been a decrease in the average daily rate throughout the season. Basically, increased competition for those room nights. You know, similar demand, but the supply is more. And I have seen, as a result of that, the lodging occupancy numbers in the summertime, as you can see there, they're a little over eighty percent. Those have actually gone down in this report since I started receiving it in about 2016. The shoulder-season numbers have increased to the point where we're breaking, we are kind of on uncharted territory in terms of those. Actually, some of those forty and fifty percent numbers are as good as we've ever seen since I've received that report. So obviously, the short-term rental impact is really significant, because that just adds to that increased inventory and is certainly, I think, at least in the summertime, driving down some of those occupancy percentages. You know, with that said, there's certainly conversation to be had about what type of visitor is visiting and staying in our standard hotels versus, you know, Airbnb. You know, if that dataset included the short-term rentals that are outside of the city limits but are still within 59937, I think you would certainly get a different picture, but that's kind of what I've seen, you know, trend-related right now.
Okay. Thanks, Dylan. Appreciate that. Then finally, as with any business, I know you operate as a nonprofit, but the fact that your public budget is projected to be down fifty percent based on your original projections, obviously, like any business, you have a cost of doing business related to your overhead salaries, your consultants, et cetera. Just curious, does the CVB have cash reserves on hand for these times? Or do you have a plan in terms of how to cut expenditures, given the fact that your revenues are decreasing?
Yeah, I think we are going through that right now. So we are looking at our private budgets pretty closely right now, not only but for next fiscal as well. And we do that initially through a committee of our board called the Finance Committee. And so we are looking at what are our fixed costs, you know, where would there be places where we either could put something on hold or decrease a budget line item? So we are going through that. At this point, you know, it's such a fluid situation, really, for us, a lot of it's going to depend on what happens in the summer. We receive a vast majority of our collections, as you know, we do through just the seasonality of our tourism season here. And we use those collections that we receive in the summer through bed tax and the tourism promotion assessment for a good chunk of our budget for the whole year. So I think at that point, you know, we'll really know. We do have, do have some reserve funds that we have kept for emergency purposes, but certainly wouldn't be enough to get us through anything that would be prolonged. But, you know, we're working hard on scenario planning right now, and as I said, it's really going to depend on what happens this summer.
Great. Well, good luck with that. It's something all businesses are facing right now, so it's certainly a challenge. Thanks, Dylan. Are there any further questions or comments on the marketing plan or the public portion of the budget from the council? Not seeing any. I will need a motion approving the WCVB FY21 marketing plan and the public portion of the budget this evening. Appreciate a motion.
I'll just remind the council that they would unmute their mics to make the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
I'll move to approve.
Motion on the table by Councilor Hartman to approve. Is there a second to the motion? Second. Secuted by Councilor Sweeney. Further discussion? And then this evening, just signify by please saying aye.
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 And that's unanimous. Michelle, thanks very much, Dylan. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
You as well.
Thanks. Move on to item four, which is communications from the public. I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Michelle. She may have some comments she would like to read into the public record that were submitted via email and/or in writing. And then from there, we'll turn to Chris, who will direct communications from those that have elected to participate tonight remotely. Michelle?
Thank you. I do have one comment from Citizens for a Better Flathead. This is, this was received earlier today, and it was from Mary Flowers. Their address is PO Box 2198 Kalispell, Montana. Let us first express our appreciation for the council's strong leadership on addressing and taking the measures needed to protect the public during these challenging times during this pandemic. On your consent agenda this evening is the extension of the time for the duration of the Highway 93 South Corridor Plan Steering Committee through September 30, 2020. Additionally, under Agenda Item Number Nine is your consideration of authorization to contract for the 2020 Transportation Plan Update. Related to these two items jointly, we would ask that you give consideration to the following. Number one, while we strongly support the council moving forward with the 2020 Transportation Plan Update, we believe that the findings of this update should be used to inform and guide final decisions on the Highway 93 South Corridor Plan. As it appears in the information provided in your packet, that the findings, traffic data projections, and policy recommendations from the Transportation Plan Update, as well as realistic funding projections from improvements needed, will not be available or complete until 2021. We would suggest that the timeline and work of the Highway 93 South Corridor Plan should be delayed until this information is readily available for consideration by both the committee and the public. So while we encourage you to move forward with the 2020 Transportation Plan Update, we would ask that a revised timeline and work plan be developed for the Highway 93 South Corridor Plan, so that this plan can be best benefit from the Transportation Plan Update. Number two, in reviewing the public involvement elements of the proposed 2020 Transportation Plan Update, we appreciate the proposed multiple interactive online tools that will be provided for public input, as well as some, perhaps too limited, opportunities for direct public input. Additionally, we would ask that public meeting notices be provided for the work of the Proposed Study Review Committee and project team working meetings outlined in the consultant's proposal, so that the public has the opportunity to observe these meetings and to learn in more depth about the pros and cons of policy options being considered as work on this plan progresses. This will allow members of the public, who are often the traffic experts in their neighborhoods, to provide more timely input and to be better informed, so they can raise issues of concern earlier in the process before the plan becomes more finalized and difficult to change. Number three, finally, while Whitefish over the years has funded and supported earlier transportation plans, the lack of funding to implement the recommendations of these plans has meant that many critical road connections have not been built. We would encourage the council, as you move forward with the development of this new transportation plan, to actively work with the consultant to have them give additional consideration and recommendations for how transportation improvements will be funded and when such funding can be realistically inherent lack of funding for what the city would like to provide. It is also important, we feel, that the new transportation plan better define how the Whitefish growth policy plan goals and call for current in currency standards as can best be implemented as new development is proposed. In currency means that adequate public facilities are in place to serve new development as it occurs and within a specific time period. Thank you for your consideration of our comments this evening as you move forward. And that is the only communication I have for this section.
Michelle, I'll turn it over to Chris Hunt. Chris, any communications from the public this evening?
So first, let me kind of let the public know how we're doing it, so, because we have not yet. For the public, if you're connected to us via your browser and through the WebEx, across the lower portion of your screen is a toolbar, and there is a small round button with a little chat icon in it. If you would click on the chat icon, so that you can then send a message to me saying that you would like to make a public comment. That way, I know whose mic to unmute. For those that are strictly on the phone after we get through with those that are on computers, I can then individually unmute you and ask if you have anything. So if we have anybody, please go ahead and send a chat message to me.
I would also just like to remind folks that you wish to provide public comment, that if you would like to provide comment on any of the four public hearings we have scheduled this evening, that you wait until we call those individual hearings. Now's the opportunity to just bring anything to the attention you would like to the council and just name an address for the record, please. Thanks, Chris.
Okay. And so far, no chats, and we just have just a few folks on the phone, so I'll go to the first person I can identify that's on the phone, which will be Dan Sampson. And Dan, your mic is unmuted if you'd like to make any public comment. I can hear nothing. I will unmute him and go to the next next person, actually, I believe is one of our folks that's going to be talking here coming up in one of our public hearings, but I'll go ahead and see. Our last person that I can identify is Rhonda Fitzgerald. You're unmuted, Rhonda, if you'd like to make any public comment.
I don't have any comment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is all that I have that I can identify at this time.
Thanks very much, Chris. I'm going to go ahead and stay with you, Chris. We'll move on to item five, which is communications from volunteer boards. If you don't mind asking if anyone attending that has an update from a volunteer board, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, if we do, if anybody from volunteer boards could send a chat message, please. Not receiving any, so.
Thanks, Chris. We'll turn it back to the council. Any volunteer board reports from the council? Just to show your hand, please, if you do have board reports. Not seeing any. We'll move on to item six, which is our consent agenda. Any changes or additions to the March 16th, 2020 meeting? Or can I have a motion for approval? Rebecca?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Barely.
Okay, I'll speak up in the minutes. I just have one correction. Page sixty-three. Under two, it says in the vent, and I think it should be vent.
Did you get that, Michelle?
I believe so, but Rebecca, could you maybe just so that I can get that correct in the minutes? I think I want to make sure that I heard you correctly, so could you email me your correction? Thank you.
Rebecca, we're having a difficult time hearing you. Maybe if you could go to your volume control, maybe that could help. Okay, we'll move on. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as corrected? I would move to approve the consent agenda as corrected.
I'll second.
Secuted by Councilor Fury. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Signify by saying aye, excuse me. Motion carries unanimously, Michelle. We're going to move on to our public hearings. Before I turn this over to staff, I've just got a couple reminders for the public. I will be asking Chris to manage public comment. Try to keep your public comments to within three minutes. We have a very lengthy agenda this evening. So again, we would very much appreciate it if you limit your public comments to three minutes. A public comment is not an opportunity for back-and-forth discussion. So if you do have questions, you can certainly pose those, but we're not going to be answering. So if you do have questions, you can certainly pose those, but we're not going to be answering. Your questions during the individual public hearings. It's the council's discretion whether they would like to address those questions after the public hearings. Are closed. And then finally, for the council members. For items seven through eleven of the agenda. So the public hearings, communications from our planning and building director, public works director, as well as our city manager. After the staff presentation, I'm going to individually ask each counselor if they have comments or questions. Or staff, just so we're not talking over each other. If you'd please respect that, just basic rule of thumb, I will. Start with Andy and then move on to Frank, Melissa, Steve, Rebecca and Ryan, just to try to keep this meeting moving as efficiently and orderly as possible. With that said, I'll move on to item seven A, which is a consideration of a request from. Morel Brenz for a conditional use permit to construct an accessory apartment located at five-five-three Park Avenue. The property is zoned. W R two, which is our two-family residential, and this will be W C U P twenty dash zero-two. And I'll turn it over to Bailey. Good evening.
Good evening. I didn't know if Chris can give me the presentation part of it here.
Bailey, just let me know when you'd like to have your two presenters. Joined in and I'll turn their audio on.
Okay. Let me share my screen here. Hopefully this works. We'll go presentation mode, just because it's a little bit bigger for everyone on the screen. Okay. So the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct an accessory apartment behind an existing single-family residence. This was actually approved originally in two thousand and seventeen and the C U P expired. The accessory apartment will be located above a garage towards the middle rear of the subject property. The existing garage that's currently on the property will be removed. The garage will be accessed from an existing alley along the rear property line, as well as an existing driveway that's located off of Park Avenue. So the property is approximately six thousand five hundred square feet. As I said, it's currently developed with a single-family residence with the existing garage in the back. It's zone W R two, which is our two-family limited residential district. And the growth policy designation is urban, which does also correspond to the W R two. It will be connected to city services and utilities. We did mail a notice to adjacent landowners within three hundred feet of the property on February twenty-sixth. We also have placed a sign on the property. We emailed advisory agencies and placed a notice of the public hearing in the Whitefish Pilot on March fourth. As of writing the staff report, no comments had been received regarding the proposal. But there were two letters that were received in support of the project, and that was included as part of the council packet that Wendy sent out. So we review the C U P in accordance with our criteria and our zoning regulations. So I'm just going to hit the highlights because of the length of the meeting tonight. So the property, as I said, it's zone W R two. The development is consistent with the purpose and intent of the regulations. Setback requirements for an accessory structure with a footprint of less than six hundred square feet is six feet from a side property line. However, because they are proposing stairs on the exterior of the structure. That makes the actual footprint of the building exceed that six hundred square foot threshold. And therefore, the building will need to meet the primary side yard setbacks of ten feet. And so the building will have to be moved four feet to the north. So staff is recommending that as a condition of approval, and it would be confirmed at the time of building permit. The zoning does require two spaces for the single-family home and one space for the accessory apartment. The property does appear to have adequate space to meet this requirement, and that will be confirmed at the time of building permit as well. The maximum height for an accessory building is twenty-four feet, and that would also be confirmed at the time of building permit. And the lot coverage in the W R two is forty percent. The standard does appear to be met, but that would also be confirmed at the time of building permit review. The apartment and the garage will access from a private driveway extending from the existing public alley at the rear of the property. There's also, as I said, an existing driveway located on the southern property line from the front of the house on Park Avenue. Landscaping, the zoning regulations exempt single-family dwellings and accessory apartments from the landscaping requirements. So no landscaping plan is submitted or required. The property is currently served by municipal water and sewer. We do have new stormwater standards about regarding impervious surface. And if the total is over ten thousand square feet, they'd have to do an engineered stormwater plan. But the entire lot is less than ten thousand square feet, so they wouldn't even meet that standard. And then neighborhood community compatibility, or excuse me, neighborhood community impact. Traffic impacts are anticipated to be minimal since the property does already have an existing single-family residence. And it's located within an existing neighborhood with similar uses. Due to the season of the year, staff is unable to determine if the existing driveway is paved. If the driveway is not currently paved, then the applicant would be required to pave the driveway as a condition of approval. Neighborhood community compatibility. The structure is accessory to the single-family home. It will be similar to existent existing adjacent residential uses in the neighborhood. It's not expected to impact or change the character of the neighborhood, and the density is not out of character with this area. So staff is recommending approval of the application, subject to eight conditions. The planning board met on March nineteenth and considered the request. There were no members of the public at that meeting, and those draft minutes were attached as part of the packet. Following the hearing, the planning board did unanimously recommend approval of the request, and I'm happy to answer what questions I can.
Thanks, Bailey. Any questions for Bailey on her staff reports?
Yeah, Bailey, one quick question. So. Their application, they said that they're building over the existing garage. Did I understand it correctly? You'll have to move that building four feet to the north. Is that correct?
Yes, and that's because the stairs are on the outside and will be considered part of the structure and therefore part of the footprint. So we look at the total footprint of the building to determine those setbacks. And so that makes it over the six hundred square feet. So they have to meet those primary structure setbacks.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions from the council? I can't see everyone on the screen, so if you do have a comment. I'm going to just bounce through the list here. Thanks, Andy, for your comment. Frank, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing to add. Thanks.
Frank, Melissa?
Sorry, no comment.
Steve?
Nothing.
Rebecca? I think that was a no. Ryan?
No comment.
Thank you, Ryan. With that said, we did advertise for a public hearing on item seven A of our agenda, and I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Chris. To manage our public comment period this evening for item seven A. Thanks, Chris.
Okay. Let me just quick question for Bailey. Do you want me to? Have the two people that you had listed on first?
Yeah, I think I was trying to see the attendees. I think I saw Justin, who was the builder. I don't know if he wanted anything to add. And then I wasn't sure if Marielle was on as well.
They both are, and I'll unmute both of them right now. So. Justin and Marielle, y'all are both unmuted, so just kind of.
Yeah, this. Yep, this is Justin Taylor, Innovative Builders. Just I don't got any questions. If you guys got any questions or concerns for me as the builder.
This is Mariah. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Just to respond to the driveway, the driveway is paved on the front.
I'll go ahead and mute them. I have not received any other requests for public comment.
Thank you, Chris. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on item seven A and turn it back. To the council for discussion or hopefully a motion. Who has a motion for me?
John, I have a question if I could ask really quick.
Of course, Steve.
This is for Bailey. Do our regulations say that the first sixty feet need to be paved?
It's act, it's the first eighty feet of the driveway.
Okay. So this would, so it would have to be paved all the way to the structure then?
Yes, I'm not a hundred percent sure what that distance is. I know the total lot is around a hundred and thirty feet. All the way, you know, from park all the way to the alley. That's our kind of standard lot. I'm not sure. I can't really read that. Let's see if Wendy's got the, a good drawing in her file here.
I'm just wondering if we need to change the, I don't know if it's paved all the way back there or not, but. Just wonder if we need to change the condition of approval to read that the first eighty feet need to be paved.
Yeah, because the site plan, it's got the length of just the existing home is fifty-four feet. So then you add, say, twenty-five feet to the front step back, five, six, seven, you'd be at seventy-nine-ish. Right around there to about the front of the proposed accessory structure. So it's like you were saying, it's pretty, pretty close to that eighty feet mark.
Maybe it's not an issue. It just seems like when we have that condition, it just says the first eighty feet need to be paved.
Anything further from council?
Had one comment from Marielle that says it is currently paved all the way to the structure.
Thanks, Chris. Not seeing any hands or. Additional comments from the council. I would entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion. I would move to approve W C U P twenty dash oh-two, along with findings fact, staff report, and subject to the eight attached conditions. As recommended to us by our Whitefish Planning Board on March nineteen, two thousand and twenty.
Second to the motion. Second. Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Is there further discussion? Comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I believe that's unanimous. Any opposed? And the motion does carry unanimously, Michelle.
Mr. Mayor, for the future two public hearings or three public hearings, can we do a roll call for the vote? Since we're having a hard time seeing everybody and maybe hearing everybody.
Absolutely. That's a great idea. I'll turn it over for the roll call.
Thank you.
Thanks. Rebecca, I do think we're still having difficulty hearing you. At least I am. With that said, we'll move on to item seven B, which is a consideration of a request from Montana Commerce. L L C for a conditional use permit to construct. A gas station and convenience store located at six zero four five Highway ninety-three South. The property is zone W B two, which is our secondary. Business district. This will be W C U P twenty dash zero-one. And Bailey, I will turn it over to you for a presentation. Thank you.
Okay, so the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct a gas station and convenience store. At the northeast corner of Highway forty and Highway ninety-three South. I have the property roughly outlined on the the screen, just using a Google Earth imagery for you all. The proposed structure, here, I'll go to the second, the site plan. That's a little better. The proposed structure is approximately thirteen thousand seven hundred square feet gross. Additionally, they are proposing two detached automobile fueling stations and one detached RV fueling station that's also proposed. On the property. Water and sewer mains are located adjacent to the subject property and service lines will be extended to serve the proposed structure. Access to the site is from an existing approach off Highway highway forty. And an existing unnamed private road that's on the north side of the property, which connects to Highway ninety-three South. The existing approaches will not be modified with this application. A conditional use permit is required for automobile service stations and convenience stores. And also for new structures where the building footprint is larger than ten thousand square feet in the W B two zoning district. The property is approximately five point four acres in size. It's surrounded by a mixture of commercial and residential uses. The majority of the zoning is either city W B two or county B four, which is their equivalent commercial zoning. There is some SAG five county zoning to the south as well. The property is currently zoned W B two, which is our secondary business district. The growth policy designation is actually suburban residential, which does not correspond to the existing W B two zoning district, and I'll get into that in a second. It will be connected to city services and utilities. We did mail a notice to adjacent landowners within three hundred feet of the parcel on February twenty-eighth. We also emailed advisory agencies. We placed a notice of the public hearing in the Whitefish Pilot, and we also posted a sign on the property on February twenty-fifth. When I wrote the staff report, I had one public comment that had been received in opposition to the project. With concerns about traffic on Highway ninety-three South and the proposed use next to the hospital. I did also have one agency comment come in from M D T, Montana Department of Transportation. Discussing the existing access approaches and the landscaping requirements in the highway right of way. There have been, and hopefully I got my number right with Michelle today, seven additional comments received. Since my staff report with concerns about traffic, the views coming into town. That this was a zone change, that they were going to commercial. It's not a zone change. It's already commercial. And so Michelle is going to read those into the public record here in a little later. So we reviewed the request in accordance with our criteria for conditional use permits in our zoning regulations. So as I said, the growth policy currently designates this area as suburban residential, which is not consistent with the W B two zoning. This property has been zoned W B two since the early nineteen eighties. According to the oldest land use zoning map we have downstairs. And so even though it's gone back and forth over the years between city jurisdiction and county jurisdictions. Every time it's been rezoned to whichever city or county's equivalent zoning, it's always been a commercial. W B two or the equivalent county zoning. It's never been a residential zone that I can find ever. So it's always been out of compliance with the growth policy designation. The property is located within the Highway ninety-three South Corridor Plan study boundary. That plan is still under development and has not been approved at this time. The draft plan is proposing that that growth policy designation be changed to general commercial to comply with the underlying zoning designation. So that it would match, but that's currently draft. It has not been approved at this time. And then, so compliance with the zoning regulations. Setbacks in the W B two is, they are required to do twenty feet in the front, which is along Highway ninety-three South. They have none on the sides unless they're budding a residential zone or a right of way, and then it's twenty feet as well. And then the rear is twenty feet if it's a budding a residential zone or otherwise none in the rear as well. The non-residential development standards that we've recently approved. Do require the building to be located within the twenty-five feet of the front property line. So that's why the building, as you can see in the picture, it's pushed. More to the the west and that south location to comply with our non-residential standards. And the proposed location does appear to meet these setbacks. Those would be confirmed at the time of building permit as well. There is no maximum lot coverage required in the W B two zoning. As part of our non-residential development standards, they are required to promote pedestrian access. The applicant is proposing a connected sidewalk from the future building to the existing sidewalk along Highway ninety-three South. They're also proposing to install a sidewalk along the entire length of the private street with a connecting stair. with a connecting stairway to the parking lot and the building. They've also submitted a landscape plan, which is actually the plan that I have up for you this evening, and I'll review that a little later in the staff report. And then they are required to install bicycle parking locking racks, which is equivalent to 10% of their required parking spaces. So based on those parking calculations, they must apply a minimum of five bicycle locking racks, excuse me, as close to the proposed building as possible, and that is proposed as a condition of approval. Access to the site, as I said, it's off, there's an existing approach onto Highway 40 at the southern, southern property line, and then in the unnamed private street, which connects to Highway 93 South. There is no direct access proposed off of this property onto Highway 93 South. As I said, the MDT has reviewed the project, and they've stated the existing approaches are acceptable for the proposed use and no new approach permits are required. The fire marshal will review the final building plans to ensure all emergency standards are being met. There is an existing access approach on the unnamed street in about the middle of the property. That's not shown, and we are proposing that that approach be removed and revegetated if they don't end up using it for any access. It's actually currently where they're, around where they're showing those pedestrian stairs coming up off the, off the proposed street. So parking, it's based off of the gross floor area of the building. Since it's a retail service, they are required to provide 46 parking spaces. Their site plan shows 43 spaces. I'll go to the next slide. That's kind of a little bit better for infrastructure. So 46 spaces are required. Their site plan does show 43 spaces. And then the three detached canopies provide an additional 28 parking spaces as well. So they are meeting the required parking at this time, and we would confirm that at the time of building permit. There is adequate room on the property to accommodate any extra parking that may be necessary. Open space is not required for the proposed use because it's a conditional use permit. The WB2 zoning does not include a maximum lot coverage, as I said before, so that allows the full build-out of the subject property. Landscaping is required for the commercial use. It's based off of the developed area of the property and the project. Based on what they've shown, they would be at least a minimum of 6% of the property or .326 acres would be required to be landscaped. They also are required to comply with our tree density standards of the 16 trees per acre. They did submit a tree preservation plan with their application that was as part of the council packet to you. So they are getting some credit for some of the existing trees that they are saving, but they will end up having to submit a number of trees, and that you can kind of see on their landscaping plan here as well. The landscape plan does appear to comply with our landscaping chapter, and again, that would be confirmed at the time of building permit. Any landscaping improvements that are within the right-of-way, either along Highway 40 or Highway 93 South, must be approved by MDT, including any installation of irrigation. And that is the property owner's responsibility to maintain. MDT does not maintain any of that landscaping. The property, as I said, is served by municipal water and sewer, which are adequate to serve the project. The engineering standards for the city were revised and have a new effective date here this past December, and that requires professionally designed stormwater plans when the impervious area exceeds 10,000 square feet. Since the proposed building alone is over 10,000 square feet, an engineered stormwater plan will be required for review by the Public Works Department prior to issuance of a building permit. Traffic, as I said, will access the site either off of that existing approach on Highway 40 or the unnamed approach. There's no direct access off of Highway 93 South. As I said, they are proposing to install a new sidewalk along the entire front edge of the private street and extend a new sidewalk from the proposed building up to the existing sidewalk on Highway 93 South. While the subject property does not directly connect to the existing sidewalk around North Valley Hospital, and off-site improvements are not required, the city encourages the applicant to work with the hospital to connect the sidewalk along the existing, or along the private street to the existing path. They actually are showing it on their, on their site plan as well on all of them. So these sidewalks must be managed or maintained by the property owner. No additional frontage improvements are required as the adjacent street is privately maintained. Neighborhood, community impact. A traffic study was actually completed for the property back in 2005. That showed future build-out of the property with multiple commercial uses. The existing approaches that are currently in place on the property were approved by MDT at that time and were installed. So the existing street and access were all implementation of that 2005 traffic impact study. So comments were submitted from MDT stating that no additional TIS is required as the existing approaches will not be modified by the proposed use. Additionally, the property does not access any street that is maintained by the city of Whitefish. It is anticipated that the existing private road and highway will be able to handle any additional traffic. The applicant did submit a traffic analysis as part of the council packet, so between planning board and city council, and I'll let them speak to that, but that was included as part of your packet by WGM. Neighborhood, community compatibility. This is looking at the mass and scale of the building. As I said, there's no maximum lot coverage within the WB2 to limit the overall size of the proposed structure. The applicant did submit square footage measurements of the surrounding commercial uses, and the proposed structure is within the range of existing commercial buildings along Highway 93 South corridor. So they're not the biggest, but they're also not the smallest. They're right about in the middle with that. Massing, bulk, and scale are all part of the Architectural Review Committee, and this project is required to receive their approval as a condition of approval. I do know they have gone to Architectural Review for pre-apps, so they are working with the Architectural Review Committee already to design the building in compliance with city code. And then the content of existing neighborhood, as I said, the neighborhood is a mixture of mostly vacant and commercial uses. There are some residential properties across Highway 93 South and just a little bit to the north of this property. However, recent development is trending to commercial uses only on this stretch of the highway. And as I mentioned before, the property is part of that Highway 93 South corridor study area, and the steering committee is looking at issues surrounding land use, urban design, transportation. And hopefully we'll get a recommendation from the committee sometime this year. So, staff is recommending approval of the application, subject to 12 conditions that were attached in the staff report. The planning board met on March 19th and considered the request. There were four members of the public that spoke at that March 19th hearing with concerns regarding traffic, location near the hospital, environmental impacts, the use of the property, potential views coming into town. Those draft minutes were attached as part of your packet. And then following the hearing, the planning board approved the request on a four to three vote with Linville, Beckham, and Middleton in opposition of the project. I'm happy to answer questions. I do know the applicant's representatives are online and are happy to answer questions as well this evening.
Thanks very much, Bailey, for your staff report. I'm going to go ahead and see if there's comments or questions from the council. Let's start with questions, please, and I'll begin with Andy. Andy, any questions on Bailey's staff report?
Just a quick one, Bailey. So the sidewalk on the west side of the property, I assume that is the same size as the sidewalk running to the north of it in front of Don K. and everywhere else?
Yes, correct.
And does that qualify width-wise as a shared use path? I can't remember.
I don't. I'd have to ask Craig. I want to say I don't believe it's eight. I think it has to be eight feet to be the shared use path. Craig might be able to answer that question a little better, but I don't feel like it is.
Okay. That's the only question at this time. Thank you.
Do you mind addressing that question, please?
No, it is not a shared use path. That's just a five-foot concrete sidewalk on both the west and north side of the subject property.
What is the width criteria for a shared path, Craig? City code?
Well, we use the, the state standard is 10 feet. However, we have qualified paths at eight feet as shared use paths just due to site constraints. But this is, you know, the two walkways adjacent to its property are just standard city sidewalks.
And there's no sidewalk proposed for Highway 40, is that correct?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one further question. I know one of the traffic solutions that's been discussed over the last couple of years for that junction is actually a roundabout. My question would be, what additional right-of-way dedication would be required on that property? Would that be an ultimate solution there? Would there be any, or would we have to condemn at that point? Or would it be something we would want to condition at this point in time?
Do you want me to take that, Mr. Mayor?
You or Bailey, please. I think maybe you, probably you, Craig, since you're involved with the 93 South Steering Committee. This has been discussed there.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure I'm necessarily prepared to answer the amount of right-of-way required. But we did consult with MDT on this project, and it never did come up. I'm not sure. Obviously, both the Highway 40 adjacent right-of-way as well as the Highway 93 right-of-way are owned and operated by MDT, and they did not make that suggestion. Let me look and see what the existing right-of-way is, and I can get back to you on that in a minute.
Thank you. That's all.
Thanks, Andy. Frank, questions?
Questions and a couple of comments. Bailey, I know that we didn't do a traffic study in relation to this particular project, and the only one that's been done was done, what, maybe 15 years ago now? Given what I'm seeing in the access to this project, I don't see how the impact on the Highway 93, Highway 40 intersection is not going to be drastically, shall we say, degraded at the least between how people have to access into this project and how they would exit it. Has, did that give, did anybody give any consideration to that or discuss that?
No. I mean, again, it's because MDT's comment was that they were, they reviewed the project, and actually, the applicant can probably discuss that. They've been in contact with MDT before they even submitted the request. Oops, sorry, there goes my light downstairs. Sorry about that. Not moving enough. They, they were talking to MDT prior to submitting the application, and so MDT was acceptable with the existing access as it stands. So that, it's, that did not come up at all with their comments.
Okay. And one of the comments I saw earlier, Craig, this might be a question for you. If not, Bailey, you may have the answer. And that is that there was some concern that whether we had the water capacity in terms of pressure and otherwise, given that we haven't built a, a storage tank down at that end of town, are we going to be fine servicing this kind of facility with, with what we have?
Yeah, we'll be fine out to this location. There is an existing 12-inch water main that runs all the way out to the north side of Highway 40, and we've pressure-tested that and have adequate supply and demand to cover the site.
And, okay, thank you, Craig. And Bailey, why, you know, I know this is, at least the proposal is for this to remain on the north side or a private road. Are we not requiring that that at least be brought up to what I'll call city standards, given the amount of traffic that it would, it would otherwise attract?
I think, and Craig might be able to answer this question, but I believe it is currently built at city standards. I mean, it's got curb and gutter. I'm not 100% sure what the total width of the road is, but I think it's, and maybe Craig can answer that question more, but I just know it's a private road. It hasn't ever been dedicated to the public. I don't know if it's a substandard right-of-way.
No, it's actually, although it is privately owned, it is a, built to city standard with curb, gutter, and sidewalk on the south side. I believe the width is about, is 24 feet, which would be the, the city standard.
I guess my concern is, would it have the capacity to carry the large vehicles with trailers and the large vehicles that would have to come into this facility to service it, given the current width of that, of that road?
Yeah, as, as it's built to 24 feet, it, it meets that, that local collector standard for the city of Whitefish. And so we haven't, I don't know that the applicants run actual turning templates on the roadway, but we believe it has significant width and is built, you know, to, to the specifications to, to meet the traffic that it would see.
That's all I have right now. Thank you very much. Thanks, Frank. Melissa, any comments or questions at this time? And I'll, again, I'll circle back with everyone after the applicant has presented their information and after public comment as well.
Okay. No, no questions or comments at this time.
Thanks, Melissa. Steve?
I don't have anything at this time.
Thank you, Steve. Rebecca? Rebecca, are you still there?
I can't unmute.
I muted you.
Yep, I have a few questions about that.
We're not able to hear you, Rebecca. Very sorry.
Can you hear me now? Whoops, rose, got barking. Okay. If I speak loudly, can you hear me?
Loudly.
My dog is with me. So I'm worried about the traffic accessing this corner in particular. When I drove the property, going into town, can only turn right. Will we be allowing people to cross traffic to turn left to this street that's privately owned? That's one question. Another one is the tree situation. There's already been a lot of deforestation. I talked to Bailey about that today. She says, according to what's being planned, there will be four trees. Build out is, I got that right, Bailey? Do you not hear me?
I know. I know, so we, yeah, there's four trees, and they're kind of, I don't know if you can see my mouse moving here, but there's four trees up in this area of the property, down in the northwest corner of the property, that they are proposing to save. The majority of the other trees are down in this area where the proposed building is going to be located. And because our non-residential standards require the building to be within the first 25 feet of the property, they basically were requiring them to remove the trees in order to put the building that close to the, the property line. So that's where a lot of the existing trees that are on the property would be removed is kind of in this, in this general area. Most of the trees that are in the center, you know, where the, the pavement is and things like that, have already been removed from past years. So they're only, and the applicant might be able to, to discuss that more. But, so they will get credit for those existing four trees that they are saving at this time, and that would get counted towards their total tree density credits. But whatever they're lacking because of the size of those trees that they're taking out, they do have to replant and meet that, that credit, which is why they're showing a number of larger trees around the property as well, along Highway 40 and Highway 93 afterwards. along Highway 40 and Highway 93 afterwards. And did you want me to answer the left turn question as well? Okay, um, so that private road is a, it's a, uh, it's a full right and left turn in. So if you were coming from downtown, for example, and you're headed south towards Kalispell, you would be able to make a left-hand turn down that private street, crossing the, I guess it would be the northbound traffic, if I have my directions right. Um, but if you're coming out of that private street onto Highway 93, you're only able to make a right turn out. There is no left turn out of that, um, to basically go south again, if that makes sense. And then the, um, Highway 40 is a right-in, right-out only. So if you were trying to make a left onto Highway 40, you would basically have to go, um, east out and go around kind of the medical compact, complex. And you hit, I believe it's River Lakes Parkway Drive, um, would be basically where you'd be able to make a left, if I explain that right.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
So the other question I had was, um, so when you turn left, leaving town, going south, as if you were going to Falls, you're in a left-turn lane. And so would this be, people would be turning from that left lane to this, um, private drive?
No, it is part that, um, the stacking area, and the applicant might be able to address this too. The stacking area, I know for that left-turn lane at the light on Highway 40, um, is a little bit, it doesn't go all the way down to this property. So there is kind of a, I guess it's that, it's the suicide lane, basically, that right, you know, right-left turn in the middle, um, is kind of around that area of where, where it kind of starts and ends. So you would not be within, I mean, unless it's like a really big long line, like maybe at five o'clock or something, I don't think you'd get stacked enough cars, um, back to be back to that private street.
Someone, if there was an RV turning left there during the five o'clock traffic, they would be stopping traffic that was trying to, would eventually go into that left turn?
I don't, I'm not sure. I don't know what that distance is from the light, the left-turn lane length from the light, how far back it goes. I don't know that.
Then, just to confirm, the only way out, if you're not going to Whitefish, the Medical Village, parking lots, that way. You wanted to go in, you will up and then leave this complex. You have to turn right on the private road and go through Medical Village, on those there private roads. And then the, and to turn left onto Highway 90, Highway 40, you're going near the hosp.
So you could make a right out on the Highway 40, so down, down here. You can do a right out and you would be able to get, you'd have to cross the lanes of traffic, but you could get out to make a left to go just Highway 93 south that way. Um, or you would have to go out, you know, this way and then come back, come back around. Um, you would not be able to make a left out of the Highway 40 junction in order to go towards Columbia Falls. If that makes sense.
Anything further, Rebecca? Thank you. And Ryan, any comments or questions, please?
No comment at this time.
Thank you, Ryan. With that said, we did advertise for a public hearing on what will be Item 7B of our agenda. I would invite the applicant, uh, to present to the council if you have additional information you would like to share. And there's a possibility that we may have some questions for you as well. So thank you for attending this evening and I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, give me just a second and I will unmute their microphones.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, gentlemen, your microphones are unmuted, all three of you, and, uh, just feel free to go ahead and talk.
Can you guys hear me okay? This is Jason at CWG Architects.
Yes, sir.
All righty, thank you for your time. We appreciate it tonight. I know it's a late night, so I'll make this fairly quick. Um, thank you Bailey for running through the zoning stuff and the ways that we are trying to meet that. Um, since this is designed primarily to serve patrons and automobiles on a day-to-day basis, we're trying to follow that intent from Chapter 3 of the Highway District. Just a quick overview there. Um, site signage, um, please note all site and building signage will be designed per city of Whitefish design requirements. We have muted, muted some of the building signage into tans and grays to match the color of the building. So it's not exactly in line with standards from Town Pump. They have made some adjustments there. A quick note here on just the building performance standpoint. Uh, these projects, especially this one, we will be exceeding the energy code requirements by about 10 or 11%. Um, that's higher insulation values, high efficiency HVAC, LED light fixtures. Um, all this is done to lower electrical needs and create lower water usage, which also helps to minimize demands on city infrastructure. Um, another note from Architecture Review Board meetings that we've had, there were some concerns about this not looking like a franchise building. So as note from Image 2 that I've submitted through Bailey, um, you can see a comparison of what this building looks like in relationship to a more standard or more common Town Pump design. Uh, the building that we're proposing is at the top of that image. Um, everything on it has been changed. We adjusted roof forms, massing elements, everything's of a different slope and scale. So it does not look like any other Town Pump out there to create that unique experience coming into Whitefish. Uh, the details go into the same effect, the siding, the stone, brick, metal exterior elements. They're all a unique material and scale and color palette, which has not been used on any other Town Pump facility. Um, you can see from that image that was submitted to Bailey, the picture on the bottom is the project in Kalispell. That's more in line with a typical Town Pump. And as you can see, other than the, the corporate sign, there really isn't much of anything that copies from one building to another. Um, otherwise, on this design, it was built and architecturally laid out to fit within historic materials used and scale and structure, kind of matching what's commonly found in smaller Western communities. Uh, what you see on the right-hand side of that upper image is an all-stone structure. So this thing was designed to look as though it was something that was built over history, um, starting with the stone and then working into gray metal and then a two-story brick structure that is reminiscent of an old, um, automobile garage and maintenance shop, kind of like what the old gas stations used to be. Um, a couple of benefits here of a convenience store in this location. Um, for the very nearby community, the hospital, the residential neighborhoods, the sports facilities, it kind of acts like what America used to have for a small corner grocery store. You look at the scales of Walmarts and Safeways and things like that, they've gotten a lot larger than they used to be. And now convenience stores like this are starting to carry things that you commonly find in an old, small grocery stores. The milk, the bread, the cereals, all those basic needs that you would want in a regular corner grocery store, which helps reduce traffic flows into the city, keeping those people local to the neighborhood. It provides services for neighboring kids, as well as people at the hospital and at the sports facilities. Um, looking at this, as parting to be, this idea to be able to keep that small-town feel, having those basic services within walkable distances to other common services is pretty valuable. It's an essential element of a small city that you might experience across Montana. Having that gas station next to the nearby adjacent neighborhoods, next to the hospital, next to the sports facility, is kind of keeping in line with that type of idea. Um, looking at this, again, just to reiterate the idea of what services are being provided here. This is not a casino, this is not. And this is in Image 1 that was submitted to you. This is not a restaurant, there is no overnight parking. Again, this is not a casino, it's not a travel plaza for semi-trucks to come in. This is simply a community grocery store, gas station type of facility that has healthy alternatives, soda, coffee, beer, wine, snacks and gas. The typical things you'd find in a more common gas station across small-town America. Um, we'll also be looking at options for healthier lunches, vegan, vegetarian, gluten-free options. So it's not just beer and gasoline and cigarettes. There's a lot more going on inside of a gas station like this than what you might have found 20 years ago. Um, one reason that we, or the owner had looked at this site, the location of 93 and 40 is kind of ideal for safety of pedestrians in the hospital or soccer fields. Um, being able to situate a convenience store here doesn't require foot traffic. Making it a very safe location for the majority of people in this particular area of town. Um, looking at other gas station locations and things like that, and this is something that Dan Sampson at Town Pump might be able to speak more to, is when you're spreading out the gas options, it helps to reduce traffic loads, helps fast, current and future growth in the community. Uh, when you're looking at the growth patterns of Flathead County, it's historically been, back in early 2000s, it was the fastest-growing county in the state. Now it's sitting at number two. It's within, been within, historically been within the top five fastest-growing counties in the nation. So it's a very popular place. So addressing some of that current growth, some of the growth we've seen in the past 20 years with a new convenience store is not trying to create something that's not necessary. It's trying to just address an existing need that is growing as populations increase. Um, looking at convenience stores for those traveling through Whitefish, um, some of the current gas stations are cramped, they're outdated, lacking in their ability to serve patrons without today's needs. Uh, this current building plan that we have has been refined to meet modern demands of current patrons, whether that be tourists traveling into and out of Whitefish, or whether it's the day-to-day travelers that are stopping on their way to work or way home from work. So it, it does provide a lot of services that you can't find in a lot of other current gas stations that have been built or designed from ideas that were around 20 years ago. Uh, the building, one of the things I think is kind of important here when you're looking at whether or not to accept or reject a project like this, is looking at building within the city limits and the benefit that that brings. I'm a small-town, Western-American guy, and I've seen urban sprawl destroy a lot of communities across the West. And I think there's a lot of validity in creating a denser, more vibrant urban fabric to the downtown and to the city limits and keeping those developments outside of the city limits from happening by partnering with the local businesses that want to develop within the city limits. So I think there's some real legitimate value to working with people like Town Pump to help, work with them to develop within your city limits, not only the tax benefits, the tying into city services, but looking at how you can create a denser, stronger urban fabric to downtown and allowing those rural areas outside of the city limits to remain as they are now. Um, looking a little bit, and I know I'm going fairly quickly here, but I'm trying to get through a few things before the night's over, is we did meet, like Bailey mentioned a couple of times, with the Architecture Review Board and PRIAPS, and some of their comments were fairly minimal. Um, looking at the site plan that Bailey had up earlier, uh, some of it had to do with our landscaping and our grading plan. So we have an example here that Bailey just put up on the screen. The orange shows the pedestrian pathway to make that a walkable type of community area. Looking at this layout too, and Joe from Big Sky Civil can speak a little bit to this. The green shows the percentage of square footage of landscaping that's required, and the blue shows how much additional we're providing. It's not necessarily trying to indicate where we provide it. It just gives you a quick comparison of how much is required versus how much we're actually providing. It's about three or four times over that requirement to try and bring some of that forested feel back to the site that isn't currently there now. Um, a couple of just quick notes here. I worked with Town Pump on a couple of projects and I just wanted to reiterate that this is not some out-of-state developer that's a fly-by-night type of company. These are a lot, local Montana family-owned business that started in about 1953 with a single gas station. They're a Montana family-owned businesses and they do support local needs through things such as grants for local emergency services, Special Olympics, Meals for Backpacks, Adopt a Family, Montana Hope Project, on and on and on. Um, you can see some of those things through Town Pump Charitable Foundation. It's a family-owned business that looks to give back to the communities it's in. So it's not just supporting another gas station in town. It's becoming a partner with a long-term local Montana that's here to help out the community and make the place a better place. Um, looking at some of the building, coming back a little bit to the building side of things, Town Pump will keep what they build and remodel to the greatest extent possible. And it goes a long way towards reducing urban sprawl, minimizing environmental impacts on the structures and the landscapes, while staying relevant to today's markets. So it's, it's very rare these days, or it's less likely these days to build a brand-new gas station there, remodeling many more of their current structure to try and meet some of those demands. If you look at general county growth, and I talked a little bit about earlier, that there is a need for things like this. Um, when corporations like Town Pump start looking at a possible new building, it's not a quick decision. They spend a lot of time looking at the science behind it, looking at population things that impact the viability of a business before they ever start to think about turning a shovel. So it's not a, a quick decision here. Um, you're looking at other factors outside of just general population growth from the main communities. You're looking at added increases of tourism, uh, larger need for basic services such as gas stations. Uh, look an example, you know, Glacier has been setting records with number of people, you know, 24% increase in traffic in 2016 and 17, and that's just a couple of years ago. So that type of trend is continuing and it does create a demand and a pressure on cities to be able to perform some of these services like gasoline, some of the main things that people use, with the known fact that America does operate on a vehicular basis quite commonly. Um, looking at otherwise, I just wanted a quick reminder that this is just a gas station convenience store. It's here as a community need for locals and tourists and a growing community. It provides many of the basic needs for groceries, minor over-the-counter medical gas, healthy food, drink options. Today's gas stations are much more than beer and gas. It's what the market's asking for and it's really what Town Pump is at the forefront of addressing these demands. It's not some of the common things that you might experience in a gas station from 20 years ago. As such, they've taken, we, we have all taken a great care and pride in designing a development here that not only serves the purpose and intent of Chapter 3 Highway District standards, but it's also what I think is very attractive and welcoming to the residents and travelers alike. Um, otherwise, that's the majority of the stuff that I have. I'd like to pass this on to Joe Murphy at Big Sky Civil to talk a little more about the site and then allow Dan from Town Pump to discuss some of the items on his, for your guys' viewing. Thank you very much.
Okay. Dan, and, uh, so y'all are both unmuted.
Good deal. We should have, uh, Joe Murphy up here real quick. He may be having some technical issues. You there, Joey?
Joe is unmuted.
Well, we're waiting for Joe. I'll go ahead and just run through a few of the things here. Um, first is, I, I wanted to draw everybody's attention to the packet, uh, the WGM insert. During the planning board meeting, even in light of MDT's comments and approval of the approaches, we listened to the comments and the concerns about traffic and we went back to WGM and asked them to review the traffic impact study and apply the latest traffic figures they had access to. And so they went through and, and took a look at that. And as you can see in that letter, they applied the traffic counts from 2018, uh, much updated and still ran the level of service on those approaches. And all of the approaches and neighboring streets or highways operated at an acceptable level of service even with this development. Um, that was a peace of mind for us and hopefully for you folks as well. Um, going on, uh, right, looking at a couple of my notes here. I know that Bailey mentioned about the, uh, stormwater and engineered stormwater plan. We will, uh, be working on that. In fact, we've begun on it. We just have not wrapped up. That's not a problem. That's, that's something that's pretty standard nowadays. Uh, another comment that we heard at the planning board meeting, there was some concerns in regards to environmental impacts that may result from this site. So just to be clear, I, I want to stress that this is not a truck stop. This is not something that's going to have semi-trucks out idling on the site, uh, running next door. Uh, it's going to be automotive service, and there is an island that's set up to handle the larger RV vehicles, trailers, that type of thing. Um, from an environmental standpoint, we are one of the most responsible operators within the state and are designed for environmental impact mitigation. Um, all of the islands that you see on the site plan will have a swale around them that would catch any spillage that took place. Those swales will then run to an inlet that is piped to an oil-water separator, ensuring that no hydrocarbons will ever reach, uh, ground level through the stormwater system. Additionally, in our general fuel construction, we do utilize the latest and greatest technology with double-wall tanks that are brine-filled, double-wall fusion welded piping, um, multiple forms of leak detection. We employ a company called Warren Rogers and Associates that does, uh, statistical inventory reconciliation. They can pinpoint a leak down to one one-thousandth of a gallon. Um, additionally, we have sumps under every dispenser as well as atop the tank at the submersible turbine pump. All of those sumps have sensors in them. If there's any sign of liquid in any of those sumps, it'll automatically shut the system down. Um, we do also monitor the interstices of the tanks. They're brine-filled tanks, so that is continuously monitored as well as pressure sensing on all of our lines. If there's any unexplained pressure drop, it will also shut the system down. Um, Joey, did we get you on yet? Geez, we might have lost him for good.
Yeah, he is unmuted, but I'm not sure why he's not coming through.
Gotcha, gotcha. No worries. Um, to go back, uh, to one of the earlier comments, as far as distance from the intersection to the, uh, private street there, uh, there is approximately 610 feet from that intersection at Highway 40 and 93 to that, uh, private street intersection with Highway 93. And there is approximately 50 feet between the center turn lane and the left-hand stacking. So no, if there was RVs or other vehicles on 93 waiting to turn left, that would not affect the left-hand stacking going on to 40. Um, with that, I think I'm pretty well wrapped up with the points I wanted to cover. Um, if there's any questions, we're more than happy to answer them. We've got Jason and myself. Um, so I think we're good. Joey, did you, uh, were you able to get on there?
Okay, guys, I guess we'll open up the questions at this point.
Thanks, Chris, for managing that portion, and thanks for the presentation from Town Pump. Uh, I'm going to go ahead unless there's anything further from the applicant. We did advertise for a public hearing on this item, which is 7B of our agenda, and I'm going to go ahead and ask Chris to manage uh, the public comment period and public testimony now for this item. Chris?
Okay. If we do have anybody that wants to make a comment, if they can, please go ahead and send a chat message. I will then unmute your microphone. I'll give them a minute to see if we have anybody.
Uh, do have one person, Richard Hildner, has raised his hand. Give me just a second to unmute. Uh, Richard, you're now unmuted.
Thank you very much, uh, mayor and councilors. Um, if someone would just let me know that they can hear me, that'd be great.
We can hear you if you go ahead and state your name and address for the record and then.
Uh, it's Richard Hildner, 104 Fifth Street, Whitefish, Montana. Uh, I'll be as brief as I possibly can be. Number one, I would, uh, urge you to ask the proponent to postpone uh, so that there can be a more, a fuller and more robust, uh, attempt or effort to have public involvement. Um, moving on, um, the number one is that MDT traffic study, as everyone knows, is now 15 years old and out of date. The most recent, uh, figures that the proponent offered notwithstanding. Two, um, the Highway 93, it seems as I recall, now exceeds the standard for a divided highway on Highway 93 South, and I think that was a 30,000, uh, vehicle limit, and we're beyond that now. Uh, so, and that brings me to number three, as reasons why I'm encouraging you to deny if it's not, uh, postponed tonight. Uh, the right turn onto Highway 40 will require a vehicle to cross two lanes of traffic in order to be in position to make a left turn onto Highway 93 headed south. And that seems to be a bit of a hazard to me. Along those same lines, I'm worried that if Town Pump builds this facility, that the existing Town Pump closer to Safeway will close, and will then, uh, that will contribute to, uh, further urban, um, blight. I heard in the proponents' discussions lots of promises such as we intend to do this, or this is what we wish to do, but I haven't seen no comments or no commitments in writing as to that effect. And so I, my experience with the city council and proponents before the city council is lots of promises are made, but sometimes they're just not kept. Finally, um, how much, um, you talked about the contributions of Town Pump to the communities in which they serve, but I saw no reference to exactly how much the Town Pump has committed and provided to the city of Whitefish in particular. Finally, if you do decide to go and approve, and I encourage you not to, um, I want, I would like to see the city have extremely tight conditions so that the proponent does not come back asking for changes because it doesn't quote pencil. We've heard that many times before. Be thinking about casinos, machet, um, machine betting and so on. With regards to the filters and sumps, there is no provision, and I think it should be a condition, that they be inspected and that the inspection be part of the public record, and that inspection perhaps is an annual inspection. Second or thirdly at this point, all refuse containers must be bear-resistant. That's all the containers that the, uh, facility would use must meet the bear-resistant standards and requirements. Containers, uh, another item I would suggest that you have in your conditions would be containers for recyclable materials must be provided. That is, a container for recyclable cardboard, a container for aluminum, mixed paper, et cetera. The bike path should be at least 10, uh, eight feet, but 10 feet would be preferable. Um, and I think finally that the private roadway, even though it's a 24-foot city standard, given the kinds of transportation that might be expected from visitors hauling RVs and boats and so forth, that it also be posted, uh, as no parking on either side. Um, the, Jason talked about, um, the unique experience coming into Whitefish. I don't believe that a Town Pump or a filling station, a gas station, uh, really adds much to the unique experience of coming into Whitefish, and I'll let my, um, comments speak for themselves. That's it.
Thank you. And Joe Murphy has tried to call in. I'm going to try to unmute him, uh, if he kept his connection correctly. I should, we should have him now. Joe, can you? I still cannot get Joe. Um, and I do not have, uh, any other comments at this point. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I do have one more. Just saw one come up. Rhonda Fitzgerald, I've got you unmuted. If you'd state your name and address.
Sure. Rhonda Fitzgerald, 412 Lubfer Avenue. Thank you, council, for this opportunity. Um, one thing that I am puzzled by is actually, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, there's a lot of other, a lot of, I'm getting a lot of noise. Um, one thing that puzzles me, I have been attending the Highway 93 South corridor meetings for two years, I think, which have included quite a bit of public opportunity to comment on their um, aspirations, vision, and so on for the 93 South corridor, including two large public meetings, um, charrette-type things. And it has been very clear throughout that the community's vision for this intersection is something, um, very, uh, a lovely, natural, park-like setting as you come into Whitefish, and that's woven throughout this whole process. And I was very surprised that the staff report did not even acknowledge that. And there is a section that talks about community character, and I am so surprised that the vision that the community had for this location has not even been included in this very copious packet. So I did want to bring that up. Um, I understand, and I find it kind of ironic, that our own city's standards require that the building be so close to the roadway that all of those mature trees must be located, uh, removed because of our standards, rather than pushing the building back into the property and allowing a park-like atmosphere from the roadways. It seems like we're shooting ourselves in the foot with our own standards, uh, because I know that those mature trees are very valuable to the public. Um, I also think that it's necessary and required, more or less, for there to be a continuity of a bike path on both, or really all of the roadways, but certainly on 40 and 93, um, continuous bikeway is something that is in every, every plan that anyone in the community, uh, prefers. So I hope that the council will find a way to require that and perhaps be able to be flexible about moving the building back to save that, uh, the trees and a, and a more, um, natural, um, atmosphere for the corner itself. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any other comments? Uh, send me. Chris, while you're waiting to see if there's additional call-in comments, I'll just turn to Michelle. Michelle, do you have any other written comments that were received, were received since publication of the packet you'd like to share?
Yes, I do. Uh, one moment. Hey, Lauren Walker wrote in. Um, she said, while you are undoubtedly, oh, sorry. Air show up in midst. Okay. While you're undoubtedly focusing on keeping our city and residents safe, the business of business will continue. Can you also try to keep us safe from overdevelopment and smart development and greed? There are just, as, those are just as important as anything else in the livelihood and happiness of our residents. That said, I would like to implore you not to give Town Pump special provisions to change the zoning of their property and put up the blight of a gas station as our welcoming entrance to Whitefish. The planning board did not want to recommend you to approve it, but could not see a way out. The way out is they don't have the zoning, and you would have to approve a zone, a change of zone to allow it. You do not have to do that. Please do not. Again and again, the council is up against bad choices that they really cannot mitigate. But here is an opportunity for you to do the right thing and not allow this. While this may seem a small thing at the moment, it is during times of crisis that all need, that all kinds of bad nefarious and unthought rude decisions get made in the name of exist, exigency. Uh, please don't allow this to happen here. Don't let this virus cause the shock doctrine to take place in our still somewhat very at the risk of overdevelopment, beautiful town. Thank you.
Okay, I do have one word from Leo King Arkeen, and I will unmute him. Leo, you're unmuted. Feel free to state your name and your address. If we can hear him. We are having technical difficulty with hearing him. I'll remind the council that there was a letter submitted in the packet from Leo King.
Would you like me to continue until we can get Leo on?
Please.
Thank you. Um, Andrea Vizotsky wrote, um, regarding the proposed Town Pump at the corner of Highway 93 and 40. That's a horrible idea in place for that. It's already a problem area for accidents plus the traffic and emergency traffic for hospital. And they are referring to current cars is old and outdated and doesn't reflect the large growth of both population and tourists to the area. As if that weren't enough reason to not approve it, the corner on either side is the initial impression when entering Whitefish. Ideally, ideally, this should remain a green space, not a gas station. Please don't approve having a gas station near this intersection. This next one is a very, pretty long, um, lengthy letter from Flathead, um, citizens from a flat, Better Flathead. Chris, were you able to get with, um, Leo?
Um, I'm going to have Leo call my office number, and then I'll put him on, uh, through, uh, through the speakerphone to get him on.
In the meantime, I'll continue with this letter from Citizens for a Better Flathead. Um, I request for Montana Commerce LLC for conditional use permit to construct a gas station and convenience store located at 6045 Highway 93 South, Zone WB2 Secondary Business District, WCUP 20 dash one. We would encourage the Whitefish City Council to deny the conditional use application for WCUP 20 dash 01 for the following reasons. Number one, failure to meet the Whitefish Growth Policy Concurrent Standards Policy and the city of Whitefish's identified need to provide additional water pressure for this area to meet fire capacity needs and service to existing development approved or built in this area. It is our understanding that the city does not currently have the funding nor location for the water storage tank identified as needed for this part of the city to meet existing and future needs. Availability and adequacy of public services and facilities are required for the issuing of a CUP has not been established with a factual basis as required by city code in the footnote below. And the burden of for doing so is that of the applicant as cited below under our point number two below. Uh, additionally, the city's findings of fact report does not provide the required factual basis to establish this under number five. to establish this under number five, that the following statements are based in fact. Availability and adequacy of public services and facilities, sewer and water, the property is served by both municipal water and sewer. It is adequate to serve the project or fire protection. The Fish Fire Department serves the site, and response times and access are good. Proposed use is not expected to have significant impacts upon the fire services. And then she has here, city council decision based on findings. Every decision of the city council pertaining to the granting, denial, or amendment of a request for conditional use permit shall be based upon findings of fact, and every finding of fact shall be supported in the records of its proceedings. The enumerated conditions are provided for in subsection J of this section required to exist in any matter upon which the city council is required to pass under these regulations shall be construed as a limitation on the power of the city of, city council to act in the matter of this issuance of conditional use permits. A mere finding or recitation of the enumerated conditions and accompanied by findings of specific facts shall not be deemed in compliance with these regulations. And she references ordinance A-407, March 15, 1982. Number two, lack of demonstrated need for yet another automated service station and convenience store in order to demonstrate compliance with required neighborhood community compatibility standards for CUP. As noted in public comment at the planning board by another member of the public, Whitefish already has five gas stations, another half dozen within 10-mile radius. 11-7-8, conditional use permits states that A, burden B applicant, burdened on applicant, the burden approved for satisfying the aforementioned criteria considered for approval shall rest with the applicant and not the city council. The granting of a conditional use permit is a matter of grace resting in the discretion of the city council, and a refusal is not the denial of a right, condition, or otherwise. Additionally, the WFGP states that it shall be the policy of the City of Whitefish to encourage and support sustainability and land use planning so that the needs of the present are met while ensuring that future generations have the same or better opportunities. Furthermore, the growth policy designation is suburban residential, which does not correspond to the WB2 zoning district. Or density residential areas at the periphery of the urban service area generally fall under this designation on the future land group, land use map. Number three, following from the previous point as to lack of need, there is no factual basis provided for the urgency of approval of this use prior to the approval of the 2020 transportation plan update and the Highway 93 South corridor plan. Both of these plans have been identified by the city as high priority plans and essential to sound planning for future growth in Whitefish. Contrary to the staff report and findings of fact prepared by the planning office, the statement that the Highway Corridor Committee intends to recommend a change to the Whitefish Growth Policy to make this area compatible with the growth policy that has not been voted on by the committee and is merely a staff recommendation at this time. See prior comment by committee member Roger Sherman that supports this committee view. Additionally, the community visioning session for this corridor plan demonstrated significant public concern for this entrance corridor to Whitefish discouraging this type of development. The records from these visioning sessions should be made part of the finding of fact for denial of the CUP. Should the city decide to approve the CUP, we should encourage you to add the following conditions. Number one, given the potential for future requests to amend the zoning for this area to add a casino use, add a clear condition denying future casinos at the site under the CUP. And then she references the, the section of the code for casinos. Number two, limit hours of operation for the sale of liquor and other alcoholic beverages at the site as the 24/7 days of operation should, would allow for sales that are otherwise limited by other state laws. Public safety and welfare is at risk, which such a highway-oriented facility is allowed to sell these products 24/7. Additionally, the applicant has failed to show any factual reason why he should be able to sell liquor or other alcoholic beverages at the site when such services are provided elsewhere in the city. Number three, limit the use of neon or other such lighting in store windows. Compliance with dark sky lightning, lightning currency currently applies, as stated in the staff report, only to outside lighting. The Kalispell Center Mall provides a glaring example of the casino using its windows to advertise its presence. Number four, clearly prohibit the use of this site for outside displays and rental equipment like U-Haul trucks, boats, recreational equipment, and other such equipment, as well as parking of vehicles that advertise a business or property. That's the end of her letter. I'll go on to, I'm gonna finish out these other letters, and then we can move on to Leo. From Alpine Women's Center, Dear City Planning Board Members, this letter is regarding the proposed land use action for property located at 6405 Highway 93 South. We are very concerned about the requests that a gas station and convenience store be built there. First, traffic impacts would be significant. The major concern would be attempted, the attempted left turns onto Highway 40 from the property. Drivers would be attempted to turn through multiple lanes of traffic in close proximity to a complex traffic light. Because people would not be able to turn east left onto Highway 40, they will be forced to turn right out of the business on the unnamed road toward Alpine or Alpenglow Dental. And then go through the medical complex to hospitalway to try to turn east onto Highway 40. This would be hazardous to pedestrians and vehicles trying to access the south entrance of North Valley Hospital and the medical office complex. Our experience has already been that the traffic through the medical complex is hazardous when cars are using the unnamed diagonal road to go to the sports complex for practices and competitions. Second, as it stands now, people turning left out of hospitalway onto Highway 40 to head east have a difficult and dangerous turn. Third, attempting to turn left off of Highway 40 into the gas station will back up traffic at the intersection for people turning east onto Highway 40. There is no left turn sign on Highway 40 hospitalway that is consistently disregarded by drivers, which causes accidents. So putting a no left turn off Highway 40 onto the gas, into the gas station will be less than effective. Fourth, if any serious consideration is made about this construction, water engineers would need to be involved in the planning due to hazardous runoff being created by fuel spills at gas stations. The contaminated water would drain toward the hospital medical offices, which already has a retention pond that is at full capacity. Lastly, the entry to Whitefish will be less than picturesque with that business there. A more appropriate use would be a Whitefish Visitor Center Historical Society location. The introduction to Whitefish would be more in keeping with the community goal. In closing, we do find the proposed gas station, convenience store, and appropriate use of the land at that location. We do not find the proposed gas station. That's signed by D. Randall Beach, Myrna Bowden, MB, Bradley Passavanna, Theo, and Kathleen Lewison, MD. And the final letter is from Anita Mills. Dear Planning Board Members, I am concerned about having a gas station, convenience store plan seeking approval for property at this intersection of Highway 93 and US 40. Traffic congestion is common there, especially during summer and winter tourist seasons. Cars turning east left onto Highway 93 will block traffic as what, as will cars heading east on Highway 40, trying to turn left into the business. Vehicles turning to, trying to turn left out of the business onto Highway 40 will turn across two lanes of traffic right near a stoplight controlled intersection. It's very poor planning, and the location will markedly increase risk of collisions. And that is the final comment that I have.
Thanks, Michelle. We'll turn it back to Chris. Were you able to get Leo on the line, Chris?
I, I do need to have Leo, if he's listening, I need to have him call my office number back so that I can then get him into, into the system, if he'll call me now. Hi Leo, so I'm gonna hold you up to the microphone, and you will, you might want to turn your speaker volume down. And then I'll hold you up to the microphone so you can talk. Yes, so I'm sorry, I just lost Leo, I need him to call me back again. Okay, Leo, you ready? Okay, just turn your speaker volume down. Uh, yes, for right now, because it's gonna give it a lot of feedback. Okay, alright, so now I'm gonna hold you up so you can start talking. Yeah, we are getting some feedback. Uh, can you go ahead and mute your speaker altogether? Okay. Okay, if you click on the speaker itself, then at the left hand, the left speaker, click on it and mute it. And that should do it. Okay, I think we got you, there's, can you talk to me? I've lost you now.
Chris, I think we, I think we need to move on, we have Liam's written comments included in the packet, if you're able to get him back online, just chime in, otherwise.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just can't get it to work, and I'm, I'm sorry about that.
That's all right, do you have any other members of the public wishing to provide comment at this time?
Uh, let me take one more look here. I do not have any raised hands or any other messages.
Okay, well, I apologize to Leo, we're doing the absolute best we can here. Be as inclusive as we can, unfortunately, it didn't work tonight for Leo, but we do have his letter included in the packet, and it will be read into the formal public packet. With that said, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing unless there's anything further from the applicant in response to any of the public comment received tonight.
Let me get Jason unmuted here real quick. Jason, you're unmuted now. For some reason, we are losing our panel, our attendees. Audio. Jason, you are unmuted, if you can talk.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, now I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just a quick clarification on the landscaping. Besides the total amount of additional landscaping provided, we have about 65 trees of a half a dozen different species and almost 1,200 shrubs planned for this site. So we are trying to address site landscaping to the best of our ability. That's quite a bit beyond the zoning requirements for landscaping in a situation like this. That's all I wanted to clarify there on that end, thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Anything further from the public, I'm not seeing or hearing any. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for discussion. I would like, or prefer, if we could move this forward with a motion, either up or down, I don't care, just to get the discussions moving since it's getting late into the evening. My recommendation at this point. Unless there's additional questions you have of the applicant or staff. I'll start with, I'm just gonna go through the list. Andy, any further questions or comments?
Um, none at this time.
No questions or comments. Thank you, Frank, Melissa.
No questions or comments.
Just a quick clarification that the applicant did go back and had a traffic review done, which is not the same as a traffic study, is that correct? Bailey, I think Bailey maybe can answer that question.
Sorry, I had myself muted there. So they did a traffic analysis, which is not as full out as a traffic impact study. They used existing traffic volumes to come up with those numbers from some past studies that MDT and actually WGM had done as well. So it's not a full traffic study where they went out and did actual current traffic counts. They used a percentage growth rate in order to, to create an estimated number of where they were compared to now, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further, Steve?
No, that's all, thank you, John.
Thank you, Rebecca. Rebecca, are you with us still?
Hear me? Oh.
I can hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you a lot better than earlier.
I'm on my phone is why. At, at this point, I think the public involvement is greatly diminished by our remote meeting requirements and our state of emergency. And what I'm hearing so far is that there's no public support other than one comment about putting gas stations at the end of our town. I would really like to see the south corridor, the Highway 93 South corridor planning done to see what the recommendations were from that committee, and we've just extended that timeline to
Can I bring up a point of order, please? I, I think this is a time to ask additional questions, is that correct? And not, not start making statements about what we view?
No, I asked the council, I asked the council if there were any comments or questions, so she, she can proceed.
All right, sorry.
You want me to proceed, okay. And also, the, the transportation plan that we're gonna be updating. I think I'd like to see all of that done before we proceeded with something like, like this. And I personally have a lot of concerns with, with not having a formal transportation traffic study. Just because I think the way I'm hearing it, it, we're, we probably will have traffic issues, and I don't really like the idea of diverting other traffic through the medical village. So I just think there's a number of issues with this project that I'm, I would rather not proceed at this time.
I, I don't have any, any questions at the moment.
Okay, thanks, Ryan, if I wasn't clear to Steve's point, certainly if there's general comments beyond just questions of staff, now is certainly your opportunity to provide those publicly.
I, I just thought of a question, if
I I just thought of a question, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Um, so just just to clarify, because I know that one of the people that sent us a letter was saying that the gas station was a conditional use and my understanding is it it's a permitted use under automotive service stations. Is that?
That's not correct. When the text amendments went through, we moved automobile or service stations from permitted uses.
Okay.
List of conditionally approved.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Mayor, I've got one other question, actually for the applicant. In listening to your presentation this evening and discussions this evening, it is is it the intent of Town Pump to close its existing facility on in Whitefish and essentially replace it with this one? Is that their intent?
Jason, I'm unmuted if you'd like to answer.
Yeah, this is Jason. I think they had asked Dan had mentioned in the past, and I might not be able to speak on his behalf here, not being the owner, but my understanding is that no, the other gas station would not be closing. This is not a close one and open the other type of scenario.
Frank, if you'd like, I can unmute Dan and let him speak to that also if you.
I'm fine with that if that's if he's got a comment on that matter.
Dan, you are unmuted if you'd like to make a comment about that.
You bet. Thank you much. And Jason is correct. This is not a build one and close the other. This is a build a new one and then hopefully here within the next year or so reinvest in the other one to kind of spruce it up a little bit.
There's no further comments or questions. I'm going to I have several and I can direct these to Bailey, Dave, or the applicant, whoever's best suited to address these questions or just these these general comments. I'm curious what the purpose or the intended purpose is for the second story mezzanine
That would be an applicant question.
Dan is still unmuted.
Okay, yes, I can answer that. The second story mezzanine level will contain mechanical space as well as offices for the manager and district manager.
So that the the second level won't be to support the convenience store sales and operations except for professional offices?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. I'll just be candid here. Would the applicant be willing to include electrical charging stations at this facility? We have an adopted climate action plan for the city of Whitefish, whereas we're trying to reduce emissions by trying to encourage alternative types of automobiles and modes of transportation. I would think providing supercharged stations similar to what we did as a city here at our own parking facility as well as facilities that North Valley Hospital provides just a mere block away would be a good measure towards the city meeting some of its climate action plan goals. Can you address that, please?
I can. And actually, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Mayor, because we are actually prepping for electric charging stations at all of our new facilities, this one included. If you look at the site plan that Bailey has up right now, you'll see down on the east side of the lot there, there's a few parking spaces and we are currently running conduits and things down there to prep for that. Our trepidation with installation right now is that we have not selected the best equipment that we can find. We're trying to find equipment that is basically going to cover all of the different makes and models out there. We have been approached and looked at some of the Tesla charging stations. We have a couple different ones scattered around the state that we've done betas on, but unfortunately, they have limitations on what vehicles they can service. So we're continuing to research that and as soon as we make a decision on what's going to best serve the greatest number of vehicles, we plan to move forward with installing those charging stations.
Would you be opposed to a condition of approval to that effect?
Not at all. In fact, also, I probably should have gone on earlier, but as long as we're talking about conditions of approval, the one about no casinos, just so you know, we have no objection to that. We have no intention now or in the future of developing a casino at this site.
Thank you. I appreciate the the response. My next point is related to I sit on the ninety-three South Steering Committee as a city council representative. And as one of the public commenters made this evening, we have held several visioning sessions and one of the common themes that we are hearing from a broad spectrum of both business owners and residents in Whitefish that both reside on ninety-three South as well as other areas of town, they're business owners, hotel owners, just a real mixed bag and a good representation of our community, in my opinion. A very common theme is the need for landscaping, which I acknowledge you've done it, I think, a great job here and gone above and beyond the city's landscaping requirements. Another element is providing alternative modes of transportation. And we do have a Connect Whitefish Bicycle Ped Plan. We have a Bike Ped Master Plan within the community. And of course, when we look down the road, we always look to see how we could potentially interconnect other municipalities' bike and pedestrian infrastructure to our own. It might not happen in the next five years, but it could happen in the next, you know, ten with the city of Kalispell and Columbia Falls is certainly what Highway forty is reconstructed. Would the applicant be opposed or support a condition of approval that basically requires that shared bike or shared path meet our minimum requirements in terms of width and design standards for a shared path along Highway ninety-three and Highway forty as well?
No, we have no objection to that. We'll certainly widen those and get them to whatever width you guys need to achieve that goal. The only concern that I have along Highway forty is given the grades that they have, we may have a tough time trying to get anything in over there. Now, if MDT was to rebuild that and circumstances changed, certainly not opposed to putting it in at that point. I just don't know physically that we could accommodate that right now.
But on Highway ninety-three, you feel you could accommodate that?
Absolutely, you bet.
I think this is a question from you and again, it relates back to one of our consultants that we had. I think it was Albine, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, the traffic engineer who we've used, you know, for several projects within city limits before. He came to one of our ninety-three South Steering Committee meetings and he had projections on growth and traffic projections. And I forget if he was forecasting out to twenty thirty-five or twenty forty. I don't recall, but he had a dynamic transportation model for this, you know, segment of the ninety-three South Corridor all the way through to Second Street. And one of the strong recommendations he made was that in order to at least maintain the existing level of service we have at the Highway forty and ninety-three intersection, or in fact, in a way to improve the level of service with the anticipated growth patterns and level of traffic we anticipate seeing at this intersection, again, I believe it was twenty thirty-five or so, the most effective traffic measure would be a roundabout. And can you comment on that? And I know that would have sweeping, you know, ramifications on this current site plan if that were a requirement of the council, but quite frankly, we either require that dedicated right of way now as these properties develop or we're never going to have the opportunity to implement those types of traffic infrastructure.
John, can you give me just a minute on that? I have the November twenty nineteen report from Bob Abeline. I just need to reference it real quickly. I did go back and look just real fast when the question came up earlier. I believe it was from Councilor Fury. There's a hundred and fifty feet of existing right of way on both Highway ninety-three and Highway forty. So you, in round numbers, have about seventy-five feet from the center of that intersection, seventy-five foot radius, which, in my opinion, isn't going to accommodate a roundabout the size that would be required for the amount of traffic on those two two roadways or the intersection of those two state highways. But nonetheless, let me let me just take a quick look at that report from Bob Abeline and I'll get right back to you.
Okay, thank you.
John, this is Dana. You know, I think it's very important that we note that the roundabout, that is a highway that's MDT-controlled, any kind of easements that they require, if they're going to have to go through and acquire those easements, that's going to be on them, actually, because we we will not be able to put in a roundabout ourselves. You know, MDT does control that intersection and will for the foreseeable future.
I understand that, but at the same time, you know, this is a transportation grid that directly affects our community. And if we can, if we can require right of way dedication to accommodate a future improvement that been identified, I think that's our responsibility, whether or not we build it or not, because I don't see down the road MDOT going to condemnation given this site plan. So it's either we require that dedicated right of way now or we're never going to get it as far as I'm concerned.
Real quickly, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Recommendation number two from Bob Abeline's report was to, and I quote, "Review the intersection traffic controls at Highway forty and consider the installation of a roundabout to control traffic flow and reduce vehicle speeds entering Whitefish." So there is a recommendation to consider the installation of a roundabout. I'll continue to look and see if there's any specific mention of what the size of the right of way requirements would be.
I've taken up several minutes of of our time here. Are there any comments or follow-up or additional points or questions from other council members?
Mr. Mayor, question, I think, for Bailey, and this goes to one of my concerns that I was trying to get to earlier is I find it, I I agree with Rhonda Fitzgerald's query as to why we would require, given the need for and our desire for mature trees and to keep a natural landscape in and around a lot of our, particularly our entrance into the into Whitefish. Bailey, is there a way we can or can require or otherwise relax the setback requirement or the what I'll call the inset requirement effectively of the building off of ninety-three to be able to save more of those mature trees and to, again, allow this structure, if it's going to be approved, to be more buffered and to be and to create the kind of entrance at least as best we can, given the current development, the current lack of development and current structure of that property? Is there a way to do that?
Unfortunately, the way the zoning code was written when we put in that non-residential development standard, it says the building must be located within the twenty-five feet. So it's not a, there's not a leeway. The only way around that is for the applicant to go to the Board of Adjustment, as with any other zoning setback, and request a variance to that requirement. But they would have to be showing that there being, there's a hardship, right, that they're they're meeting that criteria, can't be economic, you know, all those criteria through the Board of Adjustments. So it's not something that the council can decide to change without going back through a full text amendment to change that standards of the non-residential standards, so.
I must say, I hate that.
Um, this is a hypothetical, Bailey, but could the hardship be if we require the protection of those existing trees?
I don't know. That could be something Angie could ask. I mean, the hard part is, is the Board of Adjustment is a separate board that makes their own approval-denial decisions. So, I mean, they would have to show that it's being, it's meeting all the criteria. So it's not just one of them. They have, there's like seven. It's an all or nothing type. Steve's been on the Board of Adjustment for years. He could probably explain it as well. So it's, I mean, that's something, you're putting it into a different board's hands to make a, you know, a decision based on findings of fact as well.
Yeah, Bailey.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You go ahead, Angie.
You know, I'd also add, you know, Bailey's completely right, putting it into another board's hands and, you know, the CUP, if it's not acted on by council within ninety days, is automatically approved. So I'm not sure that's you want to put it in another board's hands at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment if I could, please. I just want to address the idea that this is somehow changing the zoning.
The bus now has been armed with an exit delay.
This is not a change in zoning. I think it's important that people, that the public understands that, that a conditionally used permit is not a change in the underlying zoning. It's it's a conditional use. People cannot apply for a conditional use and if it's not listed as a condition under the current zoning. And I think we also, what we have to look at here, there's a lot of discussion about what the community would like to see here. I get that. And at the same time, the city does not own this property. And for us to deny something because it's not what we want to see there, I think, is, in my opinion, is a little bit misguided. There there is a list of permitted uses that that the applicant could go and build on this site without, by just by getting a building permit. And a lot of them are worse than what we're looking at here. And I really, I think we need to consider how much thought and effort this company has put into making this as the best project it can be for a gas station at this site. And I say that with heartburn, as I said in the planning board meeting. However, I think holding, by thinking that by disapproving this and holding out for something better, I just think is, is, in my opinion, is misguided.
Steve, appreciate those comments. I'm going to make a suggestion here this evening. It's five after ten P. M. We have two more public hearings and following that, we have an additional seven items to get to on our agenda and we have to get to all of them this evening. I'm required with Dana and they're all time sensitive. So we have quite a few hours ahead of us and I don't think any good decision is made at a late hour, particularly on a project that is very much important to both the applicant as well as the city of Whitefish. I would make a friendly suggestion that we've digested a lot of information. We had a thorough staff report and presentation from the applicants. There's some information that perhaps we can digest and it may be in the city's best interest at this point and the applicants to postpone this to the April twentieth meeting. I'll just throw that out there as a suggestion unless there's a counselor willing to make a motion to push the ball down the field, so to speak.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we continue this matter to our next meeting, which is April twenty-first. Is that what I heard?
It's the twentieth, if I'm not mistaken.
April twentieth. April 20th.
And I would, just because of the technical difficulties we're having with being very inclusive with public comment, I would ask that your motion imply that we keep the public hearing open?
No, that is my intent, and that's what I was going to follow up with that, Mr. Mayor. I think that's very important. I think we, that we get more, I'm surprised we have not had more public comment, and I think the technical difficulties lend itself to, or continuing this matter until the 20th.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor. Are there any further, is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Hartman, excuse me. Is there further comments on the motion?
To keep us under the 90-day limit, fine limit for this?
Yes.
Okay.
But we will need to act at the next meeting unless the applicant voluntarily agrees to lift the 90-day review requirement. We can address that at our next meeting if needed. Is there further comment from the council? Again, the motion is to postpone to the April 20th meeting, and we will keep the public hearing open, although, Michelle, would you mind taking a roll call, please, on the motion?
No problem. Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Quinell?
Aye.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Hennan?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
In favor.
Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Thanks, Michelle, and that motion carries unanimously. Thank you to the applicants for taking the time this evening, and we'll see you in two weeks, and thank you to staff for the report this evening. Is everyone good moving on, or do you want to take a very brief break? You're probably all at home and can sneak out for a break. I'm fine if you want to just keep pushing along.
I'm okay.
All right, let's keep moving. I'm going to go ahead and move to item 7C of our agenda, which is a consideration of a request from Joseph and Jill Courtney for a conditional use permit to construct a guest house located at 535 Colorado Avenue, and the property is zone WR2, which is our two-family residential.
Sorry, John, you're muted. Are you good?
I apologize. I'll go through that again. We'll go ahead and move on to item 7C, which is a consideration of a request from Joseph and Jill Courtney for a conditional use permit to construct a guest house located at 535 Colorado Avenue, and the property is zone WR2. Bailey?
Okay, so the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct a new three-stall garage with a second-story guest house. The existing garage in this location will be removed to accommodate the new garage and the guest house. The proposed building has a footprint of approximately 1,200 square feet. The structure will comply with all setback requirements and lot coverage requirements. The property is accessed from Colorado Avenue, which is a publicly maintained road. So the property is not quite an acre, it's .98 acres. It is currently developed with a single-family residence. It is zone WR2. It's surrounded by residential properties with a mixture of WR2 and WR3 zoning. The growth policy designation for this area is urban, which does correspond to the WR2 zoning district. It's connected to City Services and Utilities. We did mail a notice to adjacent landowners within 300 feet of the parcel on February 26th. We posted a sign on the property and noticed advisory agencies as well, and put a legal in the Whitefish pilot. There's been no comments received on this project at this time. So we review the application with our criteria for consideration of a conditional use permit. I'm going to just hit the highlights. You can ask me questions if you want more detail. The property, the proposal is consistent with the purpose and intent of our zoning regulations. Accessory structures with a footprint greater than 600 square feet are required to meet the primary zoning setbacks, and so that's what they're showing at this time. That will also be confirmed at the time of building permit, as well as parking. Two spaces for the single-family home are required, and one space for the guest house. There is adequate space on the property to meet the requirements for parking. The maximum height of the accessory building is 24 feet, and that, again, will be confirmed at the time of building permit. Lot coverage on the WR2 is 40%. It appears that the standards will be met, and again, that will be confirmed at the time of building permit. The guest house will be accessed from a private driveway onto Colorado Avenue, which is a public street. There is adequate access to the property. The zoning regulations accept single-family dwellings from the landscaping requirement, so no landscaping plan is required or proposed. As I said, the property is served by municipal water and sewer. Those will be reviewed by the Public Works Department at the time of building permit. Again, stormwater drainage would be reviewed at the time of building permit. If the total impervious surface exceeds 10,000 square feet, then an engineered stormwater plan would be required at that time. Traffic impacts are anticipated to be minimal, as the property already includes a single-family residence, it's located within an existing neighborhood with similar uses, and so it should not result in a significant impact to Colorado Avenue or surrounding roadways. There is no total limit for floor area for a guest house, so that's compared to an accessory apartment that has 600 square feet, so there's no max requirement. It just must be accessory to the single-family dwelling, so that just generally means in size and scale, it's just smaller than the main house. So that definitely reduces the overall mass and scale of the building. The proposed use is not expected to impact or change the character of the existing neighborhood. It's consistent with the existing zoning and structures already constructed within the neighborhood, and the density is not out of character with this area. So staff is recommending approval of the application, subject to six conditions. The planning board met on March 19th and considered the request. The applicant attended the hearing via a conference call. No other members of the public spoke at that hearing, and those draft minutes were attached as part of your packet. And following the hearing, the planning board unanimously recommended approval of the request, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Mr. Courtney was on the line earlier, I'm not sure if he still is, but I know he was here if you guys had questions as well.
Thanks, Bailey. Any questions for Bailey from council? I'll start with Andy. Any questions? Thanks, Andy. Frank?
No questions, thank you.
Questions?
Steve?
Nothing, thank you.
Rebecca?
Nope, thank you.
Ryan?
None, thank you.
We did advertise for a public hearing on item 7C of our agenda. Chris, I'll turn it over to you if Joe Courtney is still available and wants to say a few words as the applicant. You can go ahead and check.
Okay. He is still showing on, so I'll unmute him, and Joe, you are unmuted if you'd like to make any comments.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Joe Courtney, 535 Colorado Avenue. I don't really have any comments. Jill is here too, my wife, and there was just one thing that because of, we haven't even established a builder yet, because we didn't, we're waiting for any kind of approval or not, and so there's an 18-month period in which to start construction, and if for some reason we're constrained with this virus thing, we were just wondering if we go the normal route to come back in and give an extension, if it did get passed, or is there something, yeah, if there's something else that might be in play? That was it.
I'll defer to Bailey on that question. Bailey, how long does the CUP in effect for?
So that's actually a great, great question, because generally, they are, they do terminate at 18 months from the date of approval, but the way our zoning regulations read is that they terminate if commencement is not authorized unless otherwise spelled out in conditions of approval, meaning that council could change that and allow them a longer timeframe now, or they have to provide to our department a showing of what we call good faith effort, meaning before it expires, they have to come in and show us how they're meeting these, you know, how they're trying to meet it, whether they're getting financing, whether they're getting their contractor lined up, you know, what they're doing to show that they are still going forward with that. Generally, and Dave may be able to answer this, but I feel like we only do a six-month extension at that time, just to basically, so then they pretty much get two years, you know, to do that. So that could be something the council does now, is just automatically, you know, that might be something you recommend changing, is just allowing it to go longer at this point, or it can wait, and they could request that at that time.
Joe, anything further?
Nope, nope, that's it. Thank you.
Is there any public comment, Chris, on this item?
I have not received any chat requests for public comment.
Thanks, Chris. Michelle, any written comments you need to read into the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you both. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion, please.
I have a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I would move that, I can't remember the number, oh, I would move that we approve WCUP 20-04, the findings of fact, staff report, as subject to the six conditions, is recommended to us by the planning board, and with one minor modification to condition number six, I would change that. The permit would be valid for 24 months, given the circumstances on the ground today, and shall terminate unless commencement is otherwise, activity has begun.
Thank you, Andy. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Seceded by Counselor Quinell. Further discussion? All those in favor, excuse me, Michelle, please.
Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Quinell?
Aye.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Hennan?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
Aye.
Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Thanks, Michelle. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Bailey, and thanks, Joe and Courtney, or, excuse me, Joe and Jill, and we'll move on to item number 7D, which is ordinance, I believe, will be 20-5, an emergency ordinance of the city of Whitefish, Montana, implementing the directive implementing executive orders 20-2020 and 3-2020, providing measures for the operation of local government, which was issued by Governor Steve Bullock on March 24th, 2020, amending ordinance number 20-04 and waiving a second hearing. Angie?
Evening, Mayor, and council members. I will spare you the long recitation of COVID-19. I think we're all dealing with it. So one of the things that we did really early on, I think, and it was right after Governor Bullock closed down the schools, was we adopted ordinance 2004. And at that point, we had very little guidance about how we could hold meetings and what we could do as a city. Since then, I think we've got some really, really good guidance from both the governor and from the Attorney General. And one of our primary concerns with canceling planning board and city council meetings was that there are certain deadlines that run by our ordinances and by state law. Specifically, conditional use permits are deemed granted if they're not acted on within 90 days, and there's penalties that will be assessed against the city if we don't act on subdivision applications within a certain amount of time. So back at the meeting, it seems like months ago, but I think it was only a couple of weeks ago, council had actually directed me to write an ordinance that would basically hold an abance to the 90-day CUP deadline and place a moratorium on accepting new subdivision applications. Like I said, we've got some really good guidance from the governor and from the AG since that time. On March 24th, Governor Bullock issued a directive implementing executive orders 20-2020 and 3-2020, and providing for the measures of, for the operation of local government. And basically, what the directive does, it allows us to waive several statutory requirements that dictate how we work. One is office hours, vacation, sick leave policies, and employment policies. And I think as a city, we've been very good at responding to our employees' needs at this time, but this order basically gives the city council, or through Dana, through your designation of Dana, the authority to basically regulate people's schedules, so it works for them. And also allows us to hold an abance, several timeframes, and some of these probably just aren't applicable at this point, the annexation laws, for instance, but it does allow us to hold an abance, the subdivision regulations, and it also allows us to hold an abance, our local review of site-specific development, so that would include CUPs. So we also had a letter issued by the AG. One of our, I think, our primary concerns early on is when we were, this sunshine laws, like, how do we hold a public meeting? What is an open meeting? And the Attorney General basically applied, and it's not an official opinion, it's just a letter recommendation at this point, that he approved some certain guidelines, basically, for public meetings, and this was actually brought to him by the League of Cities and Towns, so they did a great job, and they deserve huge kudos for this. So we can hold remote meetings, we need to notice our meetings, so as to inform the public of the method in which we're holding them, which I think Michelle is doing a fantastic job at. Canceling all nonessential meetings, that's kind of up in the air what that exactly means, and providing remote communication systems that allow reasonable opportunity for public comment. So basically, the ordinance in front of you gives Dana the authority to alter office hours, vacation, and sick leave policies, and employment policies during the emergency. It holds an abance, certain statutory deadlines that we are usually stuck with abiding by, and it amends our first emergency ordinance to allow us to hold meetings by remote. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Angie, any question for Angie on her staff report? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing. This will actually be ordinance number 20-6, since our emergency ordinance from Sunday is 20-5. Is there any public comment on this topic? And I will turn it over to Chris to manage chats.
Okay. At this time, I'm not seeing any public comment. If there is anybody that would like to make public comment, give just a minute, see if they can chat to me, and I will see if we can get them on.
Okay. Michelle, did you have any written comments to share?
Not at this time.
Thank you. So I'm not seeing any. Okay, we'll go ahead and go with the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion on the item 7D, ordinance 20-6.
I have a motion that we adopt ordinance number 20-6, an emergency ordinance of the city council of the city of Whitefish, implementing the directive implementing executive orders 20-2020 and 3-2020, providing measures for the operation of local government.
Is there a second to the motion? Seceded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? Michelle, would you mind taking a roll call, please?
Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Quinell?
Aye.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Hennan?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
Aye.
Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle, and that's unanimous, and we'll move on to item eight, which is communications from Bailey again. A request from Randy Dunlop and Cam Clark for Whitefish Lake and Lake A request from Randy Dunlop and Cam Clark for a Whitefish Lake and Lake Shore protection permit located at 736751 and 810 Search Point Drive to remove an existing, to remove existing individual docks and install new shared docks. Bailey?
Okay. Sorry, I was making sure I'm unmuting myself appropriately. So the applicants are requesting, it's a standard lake shore permit, so it's not a variance, to remove three individual docks, and I put the site plan, bear with me, I didn't have a great one, but it's basically these kind of first three right here near the, the mouth of the river, to remove those three individual docks and install a new shared dock between those three, it's actually two property owners, one property owner owns two parcels, so three parcels, but two property owners. So shared docks are permitted where there are multiple contiguous property owners, or a single property owner that has multiple contiguous properties, if the lake shore frontage exceeds 200 feet combined total. There are special standards that permit them to have greater wing lengths, but they also have to have greater setbacks as well. So they are proposing a shared dock in a T-shaped configuration. The breakwater wing would be 58.3 feet in length, which is under our, our requirements, and eight feet wide, which is our maximum width as well. There's three inner wings that they're proposing, and then the dock would be connected to the shoreline with a gangway. The total dock length included with the gangway is 98 feet long. The applicant's representative submitted a water depth profile that shows the water depth at 60 feet, which is generally the maximum that we allow people to go out at 60 feet, at 3 feet 2 inches. So if it's less than four feet of water depth at 60 feet, you're allowed to go out until you hit that four-foot water depth, up to 100 feet maximum. So they gave a water depth profile that at 98 feet into the lake, they still are at 3 feet 11 inches. So at 100 feet, they're, they've maxed themselves out with this request, basically. They are also proposing to install three shore stations, each with a canopy, and they are also proposing three jet ski ports on the shared dock as well. So the constructed area for the shared dock, three shore stations and the jet ski ports, is approximately 2,184 square feet. There are no other structures that are within the lake shore protection zone on these three properties to take out of that square footage. Staff recommended approval of the request, subject to 16 conditions. The Lake Shore Protection Committee met on February 12th and considered their request. There was one member of the public that spoke at the meeting with concerns regarding the placement of the dock in relation to the Whitefish River, and then the amount of lake shore frontage used for calculation of the constructed area allowance, and those draft minutes were included as part of your packet. Following the presentation, the committee voted to table the application until the applicant submitted a revised site plan, showing the property lines, the difference between lake frontage versus Whitefish River frontage, and that passed unanimously. They also recommended an additional condition, that the dock be placed 40 feet from the furthest western property line, and to have a water depth profile submitted at that location. And that motion passed three to one, so it was not unanimous. So following the meeting, the applicant did submit updated information. They were planning to be on the March 18th Lake Shore Protection Committee, and they did include a revised site plan, a revised dock design, and I'll get into that here in just a second, and a letter from the property owners on that condition that the Lake Shore Committee had proposed about the dock placement being further to the west. However, due to COVID-19 and all the public meetings having to be canceled, the lake shore permit, this is one of those that has to be acted on within 90 days from the date of submittal, and therefore it has to be forwarded to city council with no recommendation at this time by the Lake Shore Committee. So I just kind of want to go over the information that the applicant submitted in preparation of the March meeting that was canceled. So I did a bunch of research, as much as I could find, trying to find a definitive legal answer as to the location of the mouth of the Whitefish River. I pulled up some old plat maps from these property owners, but again, there's no legal, this is where the mouth of the river starts and this is where it stops. So the applicant actually went out and they measured the amount of lake shore frontage using some of the aerial imagery, and they reduced it. It was, what we had in past permits added up to 318 linear feet. They reduced it down to 280 feet, just themselves, to say, okay, we'll ignore what might be potentially in the river, or what could be argued as in the river. And there goes my lights again, I'm sorry. It doesn't like me tonight. So they reduced that down to 280 feet, and then they submitted a revised site plan using that new, thank you, using that new lake shore frontage, and revised their dock design to make sure their dock was in compliance with the reduced amount of lake shore frontage. So they reduced it down, they actually got rid of a smaller wing, and they reduced the size of the shore station canopies to make it under the maximum allowance. So for 280 feet, the maximum allowance is 2,240 square feet, and they're at 2,184. So they are within the constructed area allowance for that reduced amount of lake shore frontage. They also submitted these drawings showing the proposed location of the dock, and I'm going to go up, hopefully this works, showing, so these would be the three to be removed. This is their proposed location, and they submitted a revised site plan that shows that, those setback distance where they're proposing, it would actually have 111 feet between both wing lengths to the edge of their riparian boundaries. So they, and then there was a letter from the property owners. Basically, the property owners, they would rather have it in the middle of the property, which is compliant with our regulations. Our regulations state, we want the docks in the middle of the property to give the maximum allowance for biggest setbacks between property owners. So they're requesting that that condition from the Lake Shore Committee, making it move over in this area, over 40, to the furthest it could go, 40 feet, they actually would like that removed, as well as just the distance, in the letter, this property owner, just the distance to get to that dock, they'd rather have it in the middle. So that's pretty much what I had to go over. We are, again, recommending approval of the application. Definitely think it's better to get rid of three and go down to one, especially near this area, but again, I'm happy to answer questions. It's kind of a unique situation with this project.
Thanks, Bailey. Any questions for Bailey on her staff report? I'll start with... Where's my list?
John, you had muted yourself accidentally.
I'll start with, I'll start with questions. Andy, any questions?
Oh, yeah. Quick question, Bailey, then. So condition number eight, we just remove the 40 feet and say the dock will be placed in the middle of the three properties, or should we just delete condition eight, period?
I would say either, you know, generally, we try to tell people the condition is that they put it in the middle of the property, the closest they could get to 40, I'd probably just say go with. And there goes my lights again. I would, I, I think just maybe a condition that says the dock placed in the middle of the property would be the best, so.
Thanks, Andy. Frank, any questions?
No questions at this one.
Melissa?
No questions.
Thanks, Steve.
I have a couple of questions. They say when they did the depth study?
They did not. The regulations just say it has to be done after August 15th, but it doesn't give a, a date of, like, between two dates. It just says after August 15th to do the study. I think, let me see if they had a date on the, hold on here. Nope, they don't have a date on it. And I'm not sure, Corey, I know the applicant's representative, he was going to try to be on the meeting. I don't know since it's so late if he stayed on or called in, so he may be on to answer that question, too.
Okay.
I was just going to say, real quick, I did not see him listed as, as an attendee.
Okay.
My next question, is there anything that precludes them from building another dock if this passes, since they have two different properties here?
So because the dock, all three properties go in as a shared dock between all of them, they would have to, number one, all of the property owners have to agree to dissolve the shared dock, and then they would each have to come back in for their own individual docks at that time. So if this dock, say one of the owners wanted to do something different and go back to having their own individual dock, this dock would not be allowed to stay as it is because it's over the square footed, you know, the allowance for that. It would have to be revised and created back into two separate permits at that point. So they would be required to come back to us and ask for a new permit.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Steve. Rebecca?
Thank you.
Okay.
Question?
Thank you, Ryan. With that said, I will entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Please do.
I would move to approve WLP 20-W01 staff report and the findings of fact, subject to the attached 17 conditions, reading all of the language in condition number eight, and restating that as the shared dock will be placed in the middle of the three properties.
Thank you. Andy, is there a second to Andy's motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Roll call, please. Michelle?
Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Quinell?
Aye.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Henan?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
Aye.
Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Thank you.
It's unanimous. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Bailey. You had a big night tonight.
I did.
Thank you. We'll move on to item nine. Craig, I'm going to leave this up to you. It's the one item that we don't necessarily need to act on tonight, and that is item 9A, but if you feel compelled, we certainly will. You there, Craig?
Oh, sorry about that. You guys okay if I can do it in two minutes or less?
Yep.
All right. So I'm just going to share my screen. Hopefully this works. I think we've had plenty of conversations about the city's 2009 Whitefish transportation plan and the need to update it. Council is familiar with the process that we've gone through thus far, through our consultant selection policy. We did advertise for RFPs. That was done earlier this year. They were due on January 10th of 2020. We did receive two proposals. Those were from Robert Peshen Associates and KLJ. Back in February, council appointed myself, Karen Hilding, and the mayor to be on the selection panel. We had quite a bit of busy schedules at that point, and so Mayor Malfeld asked Frank Sweeney to sit on that, that panel. We did conduct the interviews. The budget for fiscal year 20 is $50,000. We're currently engaged in several other planning processes that, that involve transportation planning, and so our thought is that the fiscal year 20 budget will be helped to kind of evaluate the level of effort necessary to complete the plan, and then we'll have some additional funding in FY '21, and the goal will be to complete the, the plan in the first quarter of calendar year '21, so probably January or February of next year. So anyway, the interviews were held back in February on the 27th. Both, both firms clearly did demonstrate their ability to do the work, but it was the unanimous recommendation of the committee that we move forward with KLJ. KLJ has not worked for the city on any past projects, but we were extremely impressed with the research they completed to familiarize themselves with Whitefish. They bring a diverse team with a deep background in transportation, and we really feel they'll have a fresh perspective on the city's transportation needs. KLJ is currently working with the city of Kalispel on updating their transportation plan, and staff members from Kalispel provided high regards and very positive remarks for the staff at KLJ. So based on this information, it is the recommendation that the city manager be authorized to execute a contract with KLJ to complete the 2020 transportation plan update.
Thanks, Craig. Any questions for Craig from the council? All need a motion, awarding the contract?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to authorize the city manager to contract for the 2020 transportation plan as articulated by Mr. Workman.
Ryan, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Hartman. Roll call, please, Michelle.
Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Quinell?
Aye.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Henan?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
Aye.
Counselor Norton? Counselor Norton?
I saw a thumbs up.
Okay.
Thanks, Andy. The motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Craig. We'll stay with you and move on to item 9B, which is nice to see this moving forward. I know this is sensitive from a timing standpoint, so we'll move on to item 9B, consideration for approval of plans and authorization to bid the Baker Avenue Underpass project. Craig?
Excellent. Thank you, and good evening again. I'll expedite this one, but not quite as fast, if that's all right with you guys. I'm hoping everybody can see my screen with the Baker Avenue Underpass plan set in front of you. The staff report begins on page 371 of your packet, and again, I think everybody's fairly familiar with this project, so I'm just going to jump to the, the current report. The background is, is available in the packet and in plenty of past planning documents. So staff has presented, council updated you guys with the design process at, at two public meetings. These were held at council work sessions back on the 3rd of February and the 18th of February. We did receive significant public input at these meetings, and I believe we received quite a bit of, of good direction from council. And based on this guidance, we've been able to work with WGM Group to move into the final design of the project. Right now, we're at the 60% plan set stage, and those are included in this packet. I think that these plans provide enough detail for council to determine if we're ready to proceed with project bidding. So I'm just going to hit on the highlights of the plan. We'll start with the structure type. Everybody from the council work sessions is familiar with the conversations that we had, but there's basically two types that were evaluated. We looked at corrugated metal and concrete, and it pretty quickly came to the conclusion that concrete would be, would be the direction to go. The steel, while it may save some money, was definitely have a utilitarian feel and did not meet the intent of the project. The concrete will offer a clean, durable, vandal-resistant underpass, and definitely adds for future design elements to be incorporated into the project. The next was the structure size. We looked at both a 20 and a 24-foot structure. Just try and pull this up for you guys here. Staff did evaluate the, the larger 24-foot span, but it was determined that a 20-foot underpass would sufficiently accomplish the goals of the project. Structures of this size are still airy and bright and allow for visibility throughout the underpass. This underpass will be just about 100 feet long, and a 20-foot wide structure will still provide all of those. Oh, there go my lights. This building goes into hibernation mode at 10 o'clock. So anyway, concrete and a 20-foot structure, wing walls. Wing walls were the next thing that we talked about. Definitely one of the key components of the underpass is the wing walls. Not only do they use, are they used to retain soil back to, to create the entrances on both sides of the structure, but they will also be rather prominent features, and so quite a bit of attention was paid on the wing walls. We went through- attention was paid on the wing walls. We went through a couple of different options on a wall system. We looked at poured concrete walls using decorative forms. We looked at a keystone block retaining wall, and then, of course, we looked at the larger ready-rock blocks, which we were directed to move forward with. What we're looking at now is the ready-rock ledgestone blocks. So if you guys can see kind of what I'm circling here, this is the ledgestone ready-rock block. This one here is another example. And then we'll be actually having capstones on each of the steps coming down, as well as railing, as you can see from this image. The capstones will look similar to what you see in the top right side of this figure. These blocks will definitely provide kind of a random stacked stone look, which will bring character and functionality to the project. The last thing we wanted to look at, or just bring up to speed on, is the lighting. We've talked about this at past work sessions. We had some good direction. The goal of the project is really to acquire or to provide adequate ambient daylighting, accent lighting for the walkways, and special facade lighting, which has all been incorporated into the design. The structure will use a tunable LED light system. As we've talked about through the work sessions, this will allow us to kind of modulate the color of the light or the temperature of the light going through the tunnel or the underpass. There will also be downlights installed on the wing walls, so we can promote safety and accent the decorative stone in addition to pathlights, so that it'll be safe and bright on both sides of the path. In terms of financial considerations, I think everybody's well aware that we will be funding this entirely with TIF now, with the original transportation alternatives grant not being awarded and not being re-advertised to date. Right now, we're sticking with that one-point-seven-five million-dollar estimate that council saw at the last work session. That does incorporate all of the the features that we've talked about, the concrete structure, the twenty-foot width, the ready-rock blocks, the tunable LED lighting, and at this point, we anticipate that budget will carry us through construction. So while staff would typically wait until plans are a little bit further along, we feel that the sixty percent plan set really does give council enough information to authorize us to finalize the designs and go to bid. We know that the the timing for this project is paramount. In order to to fund it with TIF dollars, we do need to have it under contract in early July, and so these plans are now being brought to you for that authorization. And with that, it is staff's recommendation that council authorize the plans for the Baker Avenue underpass project, excuse me, approve the plans for the Baker Avenue underpass project and authorize staff to bid the project. Kind of a truncated version of my staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thanks, Craig. Any questions for Craig on the staff report? Andy?
Uh, no, no, I think I'm I'm good.
Frank? No questions. Thanks. Melissa?
Questions?
Steve? From me. Rebecca?
No questions.
Thank you. Ryan?
No question.
Okay, with that said, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll move to approve the plans. Do you have the Baker Avenue underpass project? Sorry, let's start over. I'm move to approve the plans for the Baker Avenue underpass project and authorize staff to bid the project.
Your second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Fury. Michelle, roll call, please.
Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Quinell?
Aye.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Hennan?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
Aye.
Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. That's unanimous, obviously. Brings us on to, thanks, Craig.
Thank you.
Good job getting this shovel-ready, so to speak, in a short timeframe, so appreciate it, all the efforts from your staff, well as the consultants. Move on to item ten. You have Dana's report enclosed with the packet. Any questions for Dana on what I consider probably one of the more thorough city managers' reports I've read in my tenure up here, so I appreciate that, Dana. Any questions for Dana? Not hearing any. Dana, anything additional to report on, please?
Yes, I do have a couple of things. Obviously, we know with this COVID-19 pandemic, we are updating, changing things as fast as the days go. We have, in my report, if you've read, we have reduced some of our shift schedules. So what we're doing with some of our staff, we're having half the crews come in on one week and then swap with the next week. That's being done across the country in some areas. In Montana, I would say we are probably unique in that. But one of the questions that I have, because I do anticipate that the governor tomorrow or Wednesday will extend the closures or the stay-at-home requirements to, I believe he'll extend it to April twenty-fourth, based on his comments last Friday saying that he's going to do it in two-week increments. We are currently, those that are not working at home who cannot work remotely, we're allowing them to use the emergency sick leave, but we would like to, I think, moving forward, we need to think about whether we're going to allow paid administrative leave, like Bozeman is doing, or if we're going to ask them to use their accrued leave that they have. My recommendation would be that we go to paid administrative leave, partly due to the the impacts to the budget. We have it budgeted to pay these individuals for this year. As you've read in my report, our funds are collectible for those that we still have on staff. And just moving forward, you know, I think having people use their their accrued leave, some that need the time the most to be at home, again, have lower levels because they've experienced issues in the past, so we'd be asking them to go into an unpaid leave status, temporarily laying them off, and they'd have to file for unemployment. So that's one of my questions with the council is, would you be willing to allow us to move forward with paid administrative leave for those that cannot work remotely, that we are asking to stay at home? And then I would like to, on another note, welcome Ben Dolman. He is our new finance director. He is here as an attendee, so you don't see him on video. He was there at our practice session, though, and we are so happy to have him on board. He, we got him working remotely since he came from Colorado, so he's working from his condo right now, and you'll get to see him hopefully at the next meeting, and can't wait for you guys to meet him in person. He's a great addition to our team. And then, also, I know we've had some technical difficulties tonight, and I want you to know that we're working through them, and Chris is doing a fantastic job, and I'm very pleased with him. Just so you know, we are having the videos. I know it can be a challenge to get logged in. My understanding is Kalispel is doing only conference calls and only allowing written comments, so I think the fact that we're taking the effort to try to allow a public comment live is something that is unique, at least in our valley, and very, it can be challenging, as you've seen. So those are just my additions that I have for tonight.
Thanks, Dana. Do you need any direction regarding additional paid administrative leave right now?
You know, I would, I would like to know, because we are going to by the next council meeting, we'll have people that are going to be on a paid leave status otherwise or using their.
If I could offer a suggestion on that, I assume that some, some employees have a ton of accrued leave that they'll never use, and if we could set some kind of reasonable cutoff that they use accrued leave down to a certain number of hours of accrued leave, and then they take paid administrative leave, to me, that would seem a more palatable option than just paid administrative leave for everybody.
So I would, for that recommendation, Stephen, I do, I have thought about that a bit. You know, I would, I would rather do it like holistically, if we're going to require people to use two weeks of leave, whatever they have, have it be a flat set that way, instead of those that have been here longer having to use, you know, more of it. Our sick leave is capped at a quarter, basically, so when we pay it out, we're only paying twenty-five percent. Vacation is already capped, and then personal time is not. But for the general employee, other than our fire and police, they're only earning eight hours a year for that.
Right, and those, those people would probably be exempt, would be my guess. They wouldn't qualify. I, I just, it gives me a little bit of heartburn to say crude time paid leave, you don't have to use some of it at this time. I mean, I get both, I get both sides of it. I understand it. I just think that if there's somebody that has, you know, ten weeks of accrued leave, then they could use a week of that before they have to, before they take paid administrative leave, because basically, they're getting paid for not working. And that's, as harsh as that sounds, I think we need to look at that option, and maybe nobody would qualify for that. I don't know. Is there a way we could see the numbers of hours that people have of accrued leave before we make that decision?
You know, I can bring it back at the next council meeting. I'm not going to give you individuals accrued leave, but I could at least give you an example of like who, who might be impacted the most. You know, and this is just for our nonessential employees. All essential employees have to be at work and report to work. And again, if you're working remote, you have to work. So who this is impacting most are going to be our public works, guys in the field, and our, our parks department for the, those working out of the shops. So because we aren't wanting them in larger groups, we've asked them to stay home. If we do have a user leave, we're probably going to get into negotiations with the union, which is fine, or, you know, we'll have to work through that, but, but we can.
Maybe it's a non-issue. Maybe we could just see the hours. I don't know. Maybe it's, maybe it's a non-issue. I don't know. Maybe nobody has enough accrued leave to make it make sense.
Yeah, the ones with the larger amount of leave tend to be our fire department due to just the hours that they work. They accrue more at a time, and they're all essential, so we have not asked any of them to stay at home. But I will take a look, and I can get back to the council at the next meeting. I think we processed payroll that week, so we'll have to know, you know, if we have certain ones impacted, but I think we can still make it work on our end.
And if no one else agrees with me, then it's a non-issue anyway, so.
I actually, I, I agree with you, Stephen. You know, I like your suggestion about bringing this back to us at the next meeting. We're already dealing with significant revenue shortfalls related to this, and I think we need to better understand what the budget impact is going to be if we just extend blanket administrative leave. And I think that employees need to have some skin in the game, as I know they agree with as well. So I think seeing this at our next meeting would be, would be helpful from my perspective. Everyone in agreement with that? I'm good. Thanks.
Yeah, that's fine.
I, I, I kind of feel like we're in unprecedented times, and so as long as it, it doesn't impact our ability to lead the city at this time. I mean, is it going to hold you up, Dana, with decision-making, for us to look at the numbers?
No, I don't think so. I think we can, we can take a look at it and see what the impact would be. You know, financially, it's not something that impacts this year's budget regardless, because if they take vacation, they're, we're paying them the same as if we're paying paid leave, so we aren't. The only way we get to that is if we're laying people off, and that's what we're really trying not to do. In fact, I'd probably bring some of them back on before laying them off, honestly. They are all essential because we're unique in Montana, we're unique of the Montana cities, who I talked to today, because we've actually reduced our staff. Most have let them all stay on because government can decide who's essential and who's not. We tried to take the standpoint with the directors, ask them, you know, who can stay home and make it safer for our, our employees and show the city, the public, that we're actually also making an effort to social distance properly. So, yeah, I will bring back the information, though.
Thanks, Dana. I need a motion to extend the meeting past eleven P. I'll make a motion to extend the meeting past eleven PM. Are seconds?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Hartman. Roll call, please, Michelle.
Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Hennan?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
Aye.
Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. That's unanimous, as you're aware. We'll move on to item ten C. Dana, thank you for your report tonight. We'll move on to item ten C, which will be resolution twenty dash twelve, the resolution of the city council of the city of Whitefish relating to nineteen million, nine-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars in sewer system revenue bonds, consisting of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand subordinate lien taxable series twenty-twenty A bond, ten-million-dollar series twenty-twenty B bond, nine-million-five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand series C bond, authorizing the issuance and fixing the terms and conditions there of Dana.
All right, thank you. That's a mouthful. But what this is, in, in very simple terms, is we have the wastewater treatment plant project that is going on right now. This is finalizing the financing for that project. This project will have five different funding sources. We have cash on hand. We have three grants that we've received, one from TSEP, the Treasure State Endowment Program, for six-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. We have a grant from the Renewable Resource Grant and Loan Program for a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, and two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand from the Water Resources Development Act, and that was the most recent one that we were notified of. So what we have is three different bonds that we will be issuing. The first one, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, is forgiven. The second one, the two, twenty-twenty B bond, is up to ten million dollars. We will issue that. We will close on both the twenty-twenty B bond and the twenty-twenty A bond, May sixth. Did I say that right? And we will be working on the twenty-twenty C bond, or twenty-twenty-one C bond, we anticipate will be, will close on that in January. So we will have an interest rate of two-and-a-half percent that's payable over twenty years. And the first payment, there is a correction that Ben noted for me, which is great. Under the financial requirement, the first payment will be July first, twenty-twenty, and that is included, is actually included in the FY, we'll have to include in FY twenty-one budget. But if we do make payment prior to it, like we typically do, we will have adequate funds in the FY twenty-twenty budget. One of the important parts of these bonds through the SRF program is that we have revenue requirements that we must meet. So annual operating revenues minus our annual operating costs must meet a hundred-and-ten percent of the coverage requirements. So far, we have been meeting those requirements, and we anticipate we will continue to meet them. The bond, our city's, the city's bond council has reviewed the, the resolutions and bond documents as well, as I have also. And so we do anticipate our initial draw, as I said, on May sixth, and I, staff respectfully recommends that the city council approve resolution twenty dash twelve.
Thank you, Dana. Any questions for Dana on her staff report? I'll start with Andy.
None.
Frank? No questions.
No questions.
Steve?
No questions.
Rebecca?
No, thank you.
And Ryan?
Questions?
Thank you all, and we'll just need a motion, please. As you can find on page four oh three of your packet.
I move that we approve resolution number twenty dash twelve.
Second to the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Michelle, roll call, please.
Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Quinell?
Aye.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Hennan?
Aye.
Counselor Fury?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. That's obviously unanimous as well. Thanks very much, Dana. We'll move on to communications from the mayor and city councillors, and we're going to go ahead and we'll start with Andy.
Given the hour, actually only five minutes passed, I'll be brief. But a couple of thanks, one to, obviously, all staff worked through some difficult times. I'm glad the meeting came together pretty well tonight, although Ryan, I still haven't seen you, but I assume you're out there somewhere. But other than that, and a lot of thanks to LJ Communications in helping everybody put together all the PSAs. I've sent those around to a number of people around the country. I know that live in other ski towns, and they're going, wow, you guys are actually doing that? And we're going, yeah, we are. So everybody keep up the good work and keep your heads down and sterilize and sanitize.
Thanks, Andy. Frank? I kind of, I would echo what, what Andy just said. And I would like to welcome Ben to the, to the city and the staff, and we look forward to seeing him. Thank you. Thank you, Frank. Melissa?
Same here. I just want to say thank you to everybody working so hard at the city to keep things running smoothly while also trying to stay safe and keep our community safe, and, and welcome to Ben.
Thanks, Melissa. Steve?
Yeah, same. Thanks to all the staff for everything you're doing and keeping us going. I also just want to say I hope everyone's taking some time every day to get a good laugh in and just take a break from your worries every day. Because it's really unprecedented and difficult times.
Thank you, Steve. Rebecca?
I just wanted to say I'm really proud of our town. I go for a lot of long walks, very slow walks with my dog. And it looks like we're doing a great job with the sheltering in place and distancing. And now we're doing this. And so I just wanted to review. Dana brought up a good point about mask wearing, is don't touch your face too much. And also, when you're removing a mask, you should actually remove it from the back, not by grabbing it here. So that's the next stage. It's been amazing to watch us have to deal with so much in such a short period of time and still do the business of running a city. So thank you all for making it happen, even though it's been very difficult. I think we're doing really well as a city, though. Thank you.
Rebecca. Ryan?
No additional comments from me. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. I'll be very brief. I spoke with friends from Colorado, New Mexico, Bozeman, Missoula, NS. And in response to our emergency ordinance that we passed yesterday, I just wanted to commend the council and everyone for supporting that ordinance. They are looking to us as the model. I'm proud to be in that position here, the city, and leading by example, and hopefully others will follow as this pandemic worsens. And I hope it doesn't, but they probably will. I want to thank Chris Hunt in particular. This has been a big lift for him and the entire city staff, but Chris in particular, I know how stressful it was trying to get this all orchestrated with just a couple of minutes to go before 7:10 p.m. tonight. I think you did an exceptional job, and I just wanted to give you a big shout out. The only real topic of business I had is for Dave Taylor. Dave, we emailed about the essential work the Architectural Review Committee performs in terms of keeping applications moving forward. So hopefully, when this does lift, we can get people back to work as quickly as possible. Doing those remotely, have you discussed that with Dana?
Yeah, I mean, we talked about it briefly, but, you know, we're probably looking for your direction, and whether you consider that an essential committee. You know, it is a requirement before someone can get a building permit for a commercial and for multifamily and duplexes that they have to have architectural review. And we can set that up remotely, and now that we have the technology and we're getting it working, we can certainly contact them and make sure that we can do that if you guys deem that a nonessential committee or you give Dana the permission to deem that not a, or an essential committee.
I mean, I certainly do. I'm not a, I do have personal concern with some of the construction that's going on within our community. It's certainly not going to be something we address locally. It's going to have to come from the governor's office. But when you have a construction site with 20 or 30 people rotating in, the subcontractors, general contractors, it concerns me. I have people that work in the construction trade that it's concerning to them as well, because they need a paycheck and they continue to go to work. With that said, who knows what the governor is going to do with residential and commercial constructions in terms of a directive. But I think it is an essential service that we need to provide in the, the ability for us to keep the ARC meeting remotely so that when we can open our doors and go back to work, we can immediately. I don't know what the other council members think, but I would consider it essential and like to provide Dana the authority to host those meetings remotely. Showing of hands if you agree. If you don't agree, that's fine as well.
Sounds good to me.
All right, Dana, is that something you can work on with Dave?
Sorry. Yep, that's not a problem. Yeah, you know, it's just the ordinance didn't give me the authority to determine what's essential and not. So your direction will allow us to do that. No problem.
I appreciate that. And finally, I was a little, you know, it's happened before, but, you know, we tried to limit public comment tonight to three minutes, and I think everyone did a very good job of that. Unfortunately, when we get a letter from certain individuals or organizations that are very lengthy and certainly exceed the three-minute requirement, I have issue with that. If those individuals were here in person providing public comment, they would have been cut off at three minutes in an effort to keep the meeting moving efficiently and orderly, and that's within my purview as chairman of the board. And I would just hope that anyone that is submitting written comments beyond the date of the packet, consider that and respect the work that we're doing and try to minimize Michelle's time reading written public comments into the public record. Keep them short, keep them sweet, and please try to get them in for the date of the packet when it is published. With that said.
Can I offer something on that, John? I'm sorry to.
Go ahead, Steve. Yeah.
When we get written comments at the last minute before a meeting, we don't, we don't read them into the record in regular meetings. So I'm not sure why we're doing it at these meetings as well.
I think, I think the reason being, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, is Michelle will usually print emails and correspondence that we receive after the packet's finalized and typically leave those on the dais for us to review before the meeting. So I imagine Michelle was reading those into the record tonight because she didn't have copies printed, and I'm fine with that. I'd rather have them read into the record than printing a bunch of paper.
Can I, can I just chime in on that for a second? I realize it's, it's uncomfortable and it's not necessarily a good system. But I think at this point, I'm just trying to be as transparent as we can. I mean, I certainly echo your views of please don't write, you know, three-page letters and expect them to be read into the record when they come in right before the meeting. But I think at this point, just given this new format and given what we're dealing with, we're just trying to be as transparent as possible.
And we'll continue to do so. I just ask that, you know, people try to get their information in before the packet's published. And if they can't, it's understandable, but try to be as concise as possible. That's all I'm asking. But I agree with you, Angie, and good point, Steve, as well. Anything further from staff? Counsel? Thanks, everyone. It was a good time. We're adjourned.
It worked.